All right, call the meeting to order at six thirty-two, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Berman?
Here.
Trustee Luther?
Here.
Trustee McNeil?
Here.
Trustee Pierce?
Present.
Trustee Mesa?
Here.
Trustee Peterson?
Present.
Mayor Gardner?
Presence.
Is that your fan?
Yeah. It's hot in here if you're on Zoom, so that's hear the fan blowing. All right, so we have some mayoral report, we have some acknowledgements. This week is May twelfth through the eighteenth is Police Week. We have National Public Works Week, May nineteenth through twenty-fifth. We have Municipal Clerks Week, May fifth through the eleventh. We have Mental Health Awareness Month, National Nurses Week, May sixth to the twelfth, Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, International Nurses Day, May twelfth, Motorcycle Awareness Month, Ulan Dafa Week, May thirteenth, and this year is the twenty-fifth anniversary. And of course, most importantly, Mother's Day, this Sunday, May twelfth. So I wanted to acknowledge those days coming up. We also, I want to announce that next meeting will actually be on an off day in time. We will be having a meeting on a Friday afternoon before Memorial Day. So there'll be no meeting on the twenty-second, my dates right? And there'll be a meeting on the twenty-fourth from about noon until three at the library. We have a special presentation tonight. We have the Las Vegas fiftieth anniversary that we celebrated with them in the village last Wednesday, or a week ago Wednesday. So again, we want to congratulate them on being in business and the Catrice family for being in Antioch for so long, being a staple in the community. And again, I want to thank them for coming here tonight and having us at your presentation the other day. I'm glad that you had so much press outside of Antioch, the Daily Herald and several other publications picked it up. And it's a rare thing to have a business like yours that has been around for fifty years and still thriving and helping the community so much. So again, we thank you and appreciate you guys coming in tonight. As as part of this, we want to present you with a plaque that you could put into the restaurants. It's a plaque, again, celebrating your fifty-year anniversary. And I told Sandy Meyer, you gotta be there for another fifty years because you're keeping them going. So can you guys come up and take a photo and Jim here will take your picture?
Did they bring soup?
Yeah, it's too hot. Thank you, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Yeah. And no pressure, if you want to say anything, feel free, but again, thank you for coming over.
Give the best speech of the person.
Thank you.
In the morning.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
All right, I also would like to acknowledge with a quick happy birthday, it's Mary Quilty's thirtieth birthday today, I believe. Happy birthday. Oh, I also, we're going to go through the citizens wishing to address the board. I would like to entertain a motion and a second to flip flop the order of the agendas tonight and go through the cow items first. There were a couple of items that were not discussed that made it to the regular business agenda. So do I have a motion and a second to flip flop the order?
So.
Motion trustee Peterson, second trustee Berman, roll call, please.
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Mesa?
That's, I guess he abstained.
Peterson?
Yes.
All right, by voting yes, one doesn't care if motion passed. All right, we have a couple of people to sign up to speak for citizens wishing to address the board. So I'm going to turn this over to our village clerk, happy Municipal Clerks Week.
I don't care, I don't care.
The opportunity to speak to the board is provided for members of the public who have a comment to make about the business of the board. The board appreciates hearing from stakeholders and values your thoughts and questions. The board strives to make the best decisions for the village and public input is very helpful. The board must protect the civility and decorum of this meeting. Please be respectful for the duties of the board and the democratic process in your comments tonight. Please state your name and address your comments to the board. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Please be factual and courteous and the board requests that you not make statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the board or staff. The board does not respond to comments or attempt to answer questions during the public comment.
First, we have Libby Dyksho.
Hello, Mayor Gardner and the Village Board of Trustees. My name is Libby Dyksho and I'm a disabled mother and active member of our community. Every day I navigate a world that often overlooks and even ignores people with disabilities. I hope for a future that is accessible and inclusive. This future can start right here in Antioch by proclaiming July as Disability Pride Month. Society often thinks of people with disabilities as a single population. However, it is actually an incredibly diverse group of over one point three billion people with a wide range of physical, behavioral, sensory, and developmental disabilities. The disabled community is the only minority group that anyone can join at any time in their lives. And while the issues that disabled people face may not directly impact you, they likely affect the life of someone you know and love. Throughout our history, the treatment of people with disabilities has been marked by segregation, discrimination, and attacks on basic human rights. In the United States, July is recognized by the disabled community as Disability Pride Month. It marks the July twenty-sixth, nineteen ninety enactment of the Americans with Disabilities Act, a landmark US rights law that extended civil rights protections to persons with disabilities and ensured that disabled people had greater access to employment, transportation, and the community. In two thousand four, the first Disability Pride Parade took place in Chicago, and since then, there have been numerous parades and celebrations throughout the US. Disability Pride is not just about recognizing disabilities, but it's celebrating them. It's about raising awareness and changing perceptions so that all citizens can live with dignity and respect. It is a time to listen to disabled voices, honor those who have advocated for human rights, celebrate the accomplishments and contributions disabled people have made, and bring awareness to the struggles that the community continues to face today. By proclaiming July as Disability Pride Month, you would be joining other cities, counties, and states who have also made this important step of acknowledging their diverse community members' experiences and contributions. I would like to urge Mayor Gardner and the Village Board of Trustees to make this proclamation. Let us make Antioch a place where every citizen feels seen, heard, and respected, regardless of their abilities or disabilities. Thank you.
Thank you.
I also have copies of what I've read.
Sure, thank you. I usually don't comment after public comment, but I will. So Libby came to us a year and a half ago discussing the difficulties of a person in a wheelchair or disabled person going up and down our main street, getting into the stores and restaurants on Main Street, just based on the fact that a lot of these buildings are a hundred years old. The sidewalks are not as wide in some areas as they could be. Sometimes people put objects in the middle of sidewalks where they shouldn't be. And we did walk Main Street and Lake Street, let's say, a year ago. Since then, I've spoken to several other people that have mobility issues or are disabled about this. And about a week ago, we had, we had a email come from our Congressman Snyder's office requesting grant applications. And we got that on a Friday and the deadline was two o'clock on Monday. So Jim Moran, Jeff Gotchow, Lori, staff, Rachel, their assistant, hustled and put together a grant application for our US Representative Snyder. And he actually called me today and said that that grant application is now again going to the next level in Congress. And the application is to make Main Street more ADA accessible, not only for the entrances of the stores and restaurants to the sidewalks. So because we did that a year ago, we now have this plan to hopefully have the federal government help us with the cost of it, but to redo the Main Street to make it more accessible. So thank you.
Michael Mara?
Hi, my name's Michael Mara, one fifteen oh quick, trying to make this fast, long overdue, but considering that Policeman's Week is coming up, it's appropriate, I think. On behalf of the Antioch Republic Republican Club, I'd like to share our appreciation to Deputy Commander Charles Smith for his public engagement or with engaging with the public at one of our meetings a little over a month ago. Commander Smith has served the Antioch Police Department with distinction and is pivotal in ensuring public safety and maintaining order in the community. Deputy Commander Smith's unwavering commitment to upholding justice and protecting the community makes him an invaluable asset to the Antioch Police Department. His service exemplifies the highest standards of professionalism and integrity. As a small token of our appreciation for his commitment to the community and well-being, to the community's well-being, the club would like to thank him with this officer's prayer.
All right, thank you. So we are going to, as I said, flip flop the agenda. So we have a regular business, the first item, and this is the committee, the whole agenda, approval of the April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four committee, the whole meeting minutes as presented, do I have a motion and a second? So motion trustee Bluthart, second trustee Berman, roll call, please.
Berman?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Pierce?
Aye.
Mesa? Peterson?
Yes.
Six voting yes motion carries. First item is a discussion regarding Centennial Park Master Plan and Ozland Grant Application. We have Doug Fair from Hitchcock on Zoom, we have the birthday girl, our director, Ms. Quilty, and Jim Moran also, I believe, was involved in the paperwork on this application. So thank you. Floor is yours.
Thank you, guys. The, as you know, the Parks Master Plan will hopefully be adopted tonight. And the starting of it, one of the main items is Centennial Park. But because Centennial Park is so near and dear to so many people in the community, I think it needs thorough planning and thought about how we take it down, how we preserve what's there and what's going to happen. And also, then Jim had found out there is grant opportunities. And Hitchcock, who did our master plan, have, I guess Doug can speak to that on the availability of money for it and it's due. Jim, do you know when the grant?
Grant will sometime in July, July to August.
So we need to get, if we're going to work on Centennial, you know, we want to get in that grant money and I believe it's six hundred thousand.
Six hundred thousand, it's a, it's not a matching grant either. It's, yeah, it is matching.
Go ahead.
So the Illinois Open Space Land Acquisition and Development Grant is, whoops, sorry, is what Ozland stands for. And every year, the state offers municipalities and park districts up to six hundred thousand dollars in matching funds through this grant program. They have very specific things that you could, for projects to be scored on, and that's, that's why we engaged with Hitchcock, who did our master plan with their experience in applying for these grants. So the window opens up in July, so we have to have, part of the process is having engineering done ahead of time. And this is, the engineering work is something that would have to be done regardless if we were going to move forward with the project. So if we invest in the engineering work and we don't get the grant funding, it's still a cost we would have had to incur. The money was going to come from cannabis revenue for the village, so that would go to pay for this. And we have Doug online, if you have any other questions or if I missed anything.
Just a little background, historically, these come out, every year they do these Ozland Grants. The last round, the township, I believe, was a recipient of six hundred thousand dollars, Lake Villa. We haven't received one of these in a while, so we did jump on a Zoom call with Hitchcock and talk about Centennial Park and the park on that we acquired on fifty-nine. And they clearly thought this one would score much higher on the criterias for an Ozland Grant. He could sell you on their success rate in a second, but obviously, at some point, we would have to do the planning for this park, whether we're doing the application or not. Jim?
Sure. And one thing that's worth pointing out, if, one of the things that scores well with these grants is if the grant had funded a previous phase of the project, you're more likely to get additional funding for future phases. So what we're looking at is the first phase of Centennial Park. And then in the future, theoretically, we could be eligible for more grant funding to pay for more of it. Grant, Doug will be able to walk us through the process.
Doug, the floor is yours.
All right, thanks, everyone. Good evening. So as Jim and Mary said, we're targeting Centennial Park for developing a master plan and then submitting an Ozland application for phase one of that, of that master plan, because we feel that would score the best between the two parks that we, that we evaluated previously. The Ozland program is very much a recreational, recreation-based grant funding system. So the more recreational components that you can provide in your application, the better. So we're of the belief that Centennial would likely score the best of between the two because it will have, you know, the most unique recreational components. So our proposal is to develop, like I said, the master plan, long-range vision for the park and then to establish at the end of that master plan phase, to establish a phase one to submit a grant, submit an Ozland application for in this upcoming cycle. That actually opens up in July and the application is not due until, I believe it's either the end of August or the midpoint of September. We'll know more once the manual is officially released, when, once the program is open. But we do know for a fact that it will open, you know, by July first or shortly thereafter. So we'll confirm that, you know, upon receiving it. But ideally, and I was talking with Jim about this earlier, ideally, you have the master plan, the phase one kind of established, right up until about when the, the grant period opens. And then when it does, all you're really doing is you're preparing the application and submitting it by the deadline. But that's not to say that you have to have it done by the time, you know, July first, when that opens up. A lot of times, more often than not, when we're working on these applications and these, and developing conceptual plans for those applications, there's a little bit of an overlap between those two, as you're, you can be writing the grant essentially at the same time that you're kind of putting, putting the finishing touches on, on the master plan and that phase. And as Jim noted, DNR has, who administers the grant, has noted to us in previous cycles that they actually give a little favoritism for funding of future phases for previous applications that they had, had funded and had seen built. So for example, if you apply for phase one and get awarded funding and have it, you know, built and have it designed and built with that funding, when you went to, if you wanted to take another crack at it, you know, on a phase two or a later phase, that, that's just another, you know, point to take into consideration when they're scoring these grants that they had already previously funded, you know, an initial phase. They, they just like to see the continued investment in the same projects as, as you're developing, kind of helping bring a, a, a long-range master plan to, you know, to life.
Thank you. So.
Doug, can you explain to them the points, the different parts of the park that we were most likely score on?
Well, that, that is actually going to be part of the, the master plan for the park is, is, is developing what are the amenities that you want to either add or that you want to renovate, to, to update. The Ozland program, they, the, the baseline is to provide a minimum of five unique recreational components or work items. So for example, you know, a playground renovation or building a new playground, you know, new shelter or renovating existing shelter. Trails is, is a part of it, as long as they are a continuous circuit or kind of like an outer loop. I believe it has to be a quarter mile is the minimum distance, that can be a recreational component. There's a variety of, of larger, kind of bigger ticket items that you can, you can include. But then they also, they, they approve even smaller ticket items if you're just based on the, the funding available, what you wanted to devote to that, that first phase of this project. A lot of times, if we're trying to get that, you know, that magic, hit that magic number of five or to go above and beyond just to help it score better, there's lower, lower recreational components that will count, like for example, Bago or cornhole is a, is one that can count game tables, a couple of picnic tables with some chess boards embedded on them, those can, those can count. Really comes down to if it, if it, if we can represent that it's a five thousand dollar cost or more, that's basically kind of the minimum cost for a recreational component to score as one. There's other items that based on our, our, our track record, kind of our experience with the Ozland program that we know will help score better. A lot of times, we're adding in an interpretive sign to kind of give an educational component to it as well. We're, we're noting the use of native plant material. So kind of, you know, first kind of an ecological, you know, positive viewpoint from DNR. If we can demonstrate that this park has a, is a connection to a, a regional trail system, maybe not a direct one, but if you can kind of provide like some sort of a map that, that links to one, that helps score better. And then the, essentially, since we just completed your, your Park Master Plan, we have an understanding of the, the ages of your amenities and any that you are, are renovating or if, if you have a demonstrated need for a particular amenity and you're addressing it in your application, that scores better because it just shows that there is, there is a need for, either based on what we're hearing from the community or when we're looking at the, the lifecycle span for, for various amenities. For example, if you have, so you have ten playgrounds in the village and they're all beyond their useful life criteria, which is fifteen years or more, and you're adding a playground, you're showing that there's a need for, for a playground and you're providing that in your application. So not just, you know, stacking the application with as many recreational components as you can, but also adding those that, that you have a demonstrated need for in the village is, is, is a surefire way to have this score better.
Well, before you guys, today is the proposal from Doug, from the Hitchcock Group, that they had presented to staff that we forwarded on to you. It's in a total of twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. Doug, would you be able to just go over, I guess, some of the items on the, the proposal? And also, one of the things that impressed us when we met with Hitchcock was their success rate in this, which doesn't guarantee us anything, but we did feel very confident with our success in the past with other communities with this.
Yeah, thanks, Jim. Yeah, so we, yeah, we do have a pretty good track record. We have over a ninety percent success rate in the applications that we've submitted. The past few cycles, I think we've, we've submitted between twenty and thirty, the past three cycles. And I think we've, we've only not received funding for, I think, just a handful of them. You know, the, the past few cycles, the available funding has, has doubled compared to the previous years, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. And that, of course, has attracted, you know, more agencies to submit grants for, which has made the past two cycles are very competitive. So the, a lot of times, if, if, you know, those are not awarded, it strictly just comes down to, you know, not the fact that they had a strong application, it just, you know, the available funding that was, that was, you know, available in that pool for that cycle. So the fact that you haven't applied for one in quite some time or received one, I, we believe bodes well. DNR hasn't told us that directly, you know, that, you know, you, if you haven't submitted for one recently, that that makes, kind of puts you to the top, top of the list. But it's our understanding that it certainly doesn't hurt if you were kind of getting, you know, grants, you know, year after year, you kind of get pushed a little bit down to the bottom of, towards the bottom of the list. So the fact that you haven't applied for one, received one recently, we think bodes well. But as far as our proposal goes, you know, we have our preliminary design services. That's essentially to prepare, really to get our feet under us, kind of, you know, program and analysis, get, you know, all the background information that we have, kind of set the parameters for the master plan. That follows into the master plan phase where we develop not just the first phase, what we're submitting the grant for, but kind of the long-range vision for the park, what you want that to be, you know, however, however many years, you know, that you feel it'll take to achieve that vision. And at the end of that master plan phase, we're identifying this first phase that you want to target submitting the application for. And that spills into the grant preparation phase where we're essentially downloading all of the, downloading the manual, reading that through, once it's released, working with staff to get, gather the, the information needed to prepare and submit the grant. There's a good amount of narrative writing, so we have a good amount of back and forth with staff on the various sections and the information that's needed for, for the application. But really, all that's needed in the, in, in the application is a conceptual plan. So this doesn't need to be a fully, you know, engineered, this is certainly not a permit or bid-ready design that's going in, it's very much a conceptual, you know, rendered graphic that you do have the ability to adjust, you know, if you're awarding funding and you go into final design, where you are preparing those, those design development, kind of construction documents for it to be permanent bid and built from. You, you have the ability to tweak and adjust that as you need, as you need. Obviously, not taking away components that you can put in your application, but the, the, the plan that it's included in the application when you submit is very much conceptual in nature. So that's, that's really the, the plan and the costs associated with that are really kind of the nucleus of the application. So we, so we make sure that we hammer that out in the master plan, the phase one portion of that. So we have that ready to go for, we include that in the grant preparation. It's all online, it's available now. You used to have to put everything in a binder, two copies, and who would drive them down to Springfield? And we're happy that we no longer have to do that. It's all through their online portal now, which is called Amplifun. So as soon as the grant opens, we help make sure that you're registered on the state's GATA. That's the Grant Act Transparency, Grant Accountability Transparency Act system, getting you set up there and then start to build the application in the Amplifun system. We'll have various checkpoints with staff along the way to verify the information that we have and there is correct. We have one final couple, couple of reviews towards the end. And then ultimately, a lot of times, we're submitting on the village's behalf. I think it's rare that we have an agency that, that prefers to submit. So we can certainly, with your approval, be the ones to hit the, hit the trigger on this before the deadline. Whether that ends up being the end of August or mid-September, as I noted earlier. Couple of key things to point out, community input is a key portion of the application. They want to make sure that this has been publicly advertised to the community and that the project has, has gained feedback from the community. One of the questions we asked a while ago was, in this specific instance, where we had just recently completed your master plan, your, your Parks Master Plan and had various community, we had two community meetings for that, as well as a survey. Can that count towards the application that we prepare and submit? And the answer to that is no, the, the community input meeting that you have specific for the application needs to be specific to the site that you're, you're proposing or the plan that you're proposing. So it can't be a general community meeting like we had for the Parks Master Plan, where we were talking about all of your parks, all of your facilities, programs, and, and, and other items, it needs to be specific to the application that you're submitting for. So when, in our proposal, we have a, the community meeting, whether that's, we put it per meeting, if you want to have, some agencies want to have multiple meetings, you know, some like to do a pre-design or kind of a mid-design meeting, so that's why I put that in there as a per meeting, that's for us to prepare, facilitate and run that meeting. There's a variety of formats, we can do that. But ultimately, if you don't want to include that portion of our proposal, what we've done in other agencies is we've provided you the, the meeting materials and kind of run through the format of that and give that to you for you to essentially run the meeting, track attendance and get feedback from the community that then gets put into a summary and included in the application. So there's a variety of ways we can go about it, whether you want to facilitate it, you want us to. Sometimes it's a structured meeting, like we did at the, the community or the, the master plan meetings, where it was like kind of a consensus building, kind of brainstorming workshop. Or we've done just open format, like an open house, where you have some, some boards set up. People show up and kind of, you kind of stand by the boards and answer any questions or explain the plan to them. And you're, you're just tracking attendance and that gets put in, in the application. We've done, done a variety of ways and they all count for the community input portion. And then opposite of that, I mean, these are all options where you're advertising a community meeting and having the residents come to you. We've also done where you do the opposite, where you, where you know where the community is going to be and you kind of go to them. So, you know, if there's a community event that you know is going to be highly attended, you essentially set up a booth or a table there where you know the people are going to be and, and have the, you know, the plans or some image boards displayed and gather feedback that way. That's a, that's a pretty low-cost, minimal effort way to, to get feedback from the community. Again, you're just tracking attendance, getting feedback and putting that into summary form. You really just, at the end of the day, what, what gets put in the application is essentially a copy of the meeting notice that you put in a local publication, so typically the local paper, copy of that, the meeting sign-in sheet, so you can note the, the attendees that were there. Any feedback you get, so kind of like just a quick summary and just some images from the meeting. And that's, that's all that really needs to be added to that section for it to qualify.
All right, thank you. I'm going to go around and have the trustees ask their questions or comments about this process. So I'll start on this side of the, guys, are there any questions or comments on this? No?
One quick question.
Just one quick question, what's the turnaround time on determining if we were to receive the grant money? Is there, once we put the application in, by the end of August, how long does it take to hear back?
So it just depends, it it depends on how many applications they receive, but going on past cycles, they're typical processes. They like to align the announcements with uh, the IPRA Conference um, in Chicago, which is the last week of January, um, and they miss that by by about a week um, this year. I think there were some rumblings that there was going to be an announcement at the conference and then it followed by about a week, so um, if if there's, if their due date is mid-September, you know, end of August, mid-September, you're like, more than likely not hearing about it until early, early the following year.
Trustee Boothard?
Yeah, um, you've actually touched on quite a few of the questions I had, so I only have one main question. And you kind of touched on that too, but I mean, we're we're voting later on to accept the master park plan for the whole village. Being that you just went through that with us and created that master park plan, does this pricing account for that? Or would, if we were starting from scratch, would this pricing be the same? Or is is I basically getting at, you've done a lot of the work. I know it's going to be more fine tuned for Centennial, but it's a very detailed report in the master plan, so I'm just wondering if it's, we're seeing these prices at a level that account for that, or are we paying for the same work to be done again?
That's a good question, and and to answer your, to answer that, no, we're not. We we have a lot of good information as like the the, kind of the base, the foundation to kind of get us pointed in the right direction to start the master plan process, but um, that's really just scratching the surface. We really don't, you know, at the master plan, the the comprehensive master plan level, you know, we're focusing on a variety of parks, a variety, you know, variety of facilities and programs, and we weren't getting down to like, you know, site-specific, you know, actual like detailed conceptual development for a park improvements plan. We know what are some of the items that are are um, going to be needed at Centennial and what are those that we're hearing from the community, so that that helps us kind of, like I said, point us in the right direction. But the actual design work, the design work for for that park um, is what's included in this proposal in the master plan phase and then the developing the phase one portion of that.
Okay, and then just one more, this, when completed, other than the grant preparation and submission of the grant, we'll have a basically an a rough plan for what we would like at Centennial Park. What would be the next phase from there? Is there a an extra step, a design phase that goes further in detail? Or would this be sufficient to go to the actual construction phase?
No, this will just be, again, a a conceptual master plan, the the cost estimation that we'll be doing um, and the geometry that we'll be developing will be, will be conceptualized, but it will be strictly for the purposes of the long-range planning of the park, park improvements. And then the phase one portion that gets submitted for the grant. Um, if you are awarded funding, there is a portion of, there's a certain percentage limit um, of your application that you can, you can devote towards design and engineering services. So if you are awarded funding, next steps would be for you to um, engage with us um, for a final design proposal to develop that phase one plan, and that is, you know, that is site survey, geotechnical reports, uh, basement preparation, developing, um, so taking, taking the 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 phase one conceptual plan and getting that, you know, going through final design services to get that ready for uh, you know, construction documents that you're using to to bid, to permit, and then to ultimately build the the project from. That will likely include a civil engineer, uh, and an electrical engineer, um, if, you know, depending on what's, what's uh, finalized for phase one. Um, so and then obviously, construction administration and observation um, for those, once you've gone out to bid, have a contractor under award, um, and then are are building the project, so that would come separate, but you do get, you can get funded for for that work as part of your, you know, up to six hundred thousand dollar match.
Yeah, um, one last question, uh, in your optional services, it mentions board meeting attendance per meeting, twelve hundred dollars.
Correct.
Is that an in-person attendance? Is that via Zoom? Is that if you go to a park board meeting? I mean, how many of these meetings do you envision having to attend?
Really, that's, that's up to you, and that's why we put it in on a per meeting. If if you want us at at one meeting or 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 three meetings, I'm just throwing that out there, and those are factored on in in-person attendance. Um, so a good portion of that is 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 travel, the time for the meeting. Um, but then also, it's it's preparation for the meeting, you know, a lot of times there's a presentation um, that gets, that gets, you know, brought forth and and run through at at the meeting, uh, reviewing of plans, um, there's, there's a good amount of preparation and coordination with staff leading up to the meeting. Um, if you prefer that it that is done via Zoom, obviously that gets, that gets cut, you know, probably in half. Um, and that's, that's really in there as an optional services because it's, it's definitely not uh, required for um, any, any, what we're doing for, you know, preparing the master plan or submitting the grant. The one thing that you will need to do, whether that's with our attendance or without, um, is you will need to formally approve submitting the application. Uh, so that when the village does submit, they have board approval um, to submit the application, so that's a, it's, it's just a one-page, it's, it's from the manual, it's called the uh, resolution of authorization that gets uh, signed and notarized and gets included in the application that we submit. And sometimes, and we put that again, we put that in there as as optional. Um, some agencies want us to be at that meeting, so we can answer any questions that may come up about the plan or the application, um, but a lot of times we're, we're not there and we're just getting the the signed document the day after the meeting.
Thank you. Decide?
Um, yeah. First of all, I I I get a little confused when you keep saying master plan because I'm thinking of the master park plan we're also approving tonight, so I'm going to strike out everything that says master plan in your proposal for Centennial Park and just call it Centennial. Just so I'm 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 clear on what I'm talking about. That's the first thing. Um, the second thing, when I do a job, we we sell our customer product. And it's an expensive product. And then, once we sell it, we have planning meetings, we have Zoom meetings, we have onsite visits, we do all the planning, and then we do, then we do server setups, we do networking setups, we do camera installation. And we do all this stuff, and the meetings that we have are part of the process. After, and then when we're done, we typically have a post, a post analysis meeting to make sure the customer is satisfied, they understand what we did and that everything's working and and stuff like that. We don't go to our customer and say, oh, you gotta pay us to come talk to us. Yeah, yeah, and and so it's kind of rubbing me wrong because of the way our company works. We, we um, we bundle it all in there. We, our sales rep sells the product and that includes the price of everything we're doing and the services and the matter how many, some customers need one meeting, some customers need one, need one meeting a week. It depends upon what their their needs are. It's all fit into the price and it's not, oh, we're this extra cost, and then we we follow up with, okay, it's twenty seven five plus twelve hundred per meeting that you want to have, if you want to have them. And once it's approved, if it's approved, then we have to come back to you and and sign up for the actual Centennial Park design session, which I'm sure is going to be a little bit more than twenty seven five. Um, so I'm I'm a little concerned about this per-meeting cost, it just, it's kind of, to me, customer unfriendly. Um, and then the other thing is, following up, if we do get approved, do we have to use your firm or can we RFP it and get the best price for the for the taxpayers?
I'm only going to speak trustee to the uh, per-meeting fee. Um, I'll let Doug speak to how his firm designs those. Um, you know, I guess the way I looked at it from the administrative level is I appreciated the fact that they gave us some transparent pricing, so we understand what our all-in costs could potentially be. Um, and the and the pricing for that is really no different than any of the other contractors or vendors that we use. We pay per-meeting fees for Lakota, our architects, our engineers. Every time they come and present to the board, there are costs associated with those appearances, so this really isn't out of line um, from the professional services realm of things, but I will let Doug speak to his perspective on it and then answer questions on uh, whether or not we have to move forward with his firm or we can go elsewhere.
Yeah, and so the the community meeting is specifically just for the input meeting, the the requirement of the application uh, for the application. Um, in our scope, we have outlined various staff-level meetings, whether that be in-person or or Zoom, we leave that up to, or, you know, Teams or Zoom. We leave that up to the uh, the agency or our our client to decide. So we do have a variety of meetings that are included in our base master plan phase and grand preparation scope um, to have, you know, checkpoints that, you know, fifty percent master plan completion, you know, ninety percent, we're getting close to the end. Uh, various reviews, check-in points on the application as we're building that. Um, and then beyond that, if there is a need to hop on a call or or a Teams meeting or or anything of of that sort um, to make sure that we're, we're, we're staying on track and and developing everything that's consistent with the expectations um, of this proposal, you know, and or contract. We we do that. We really only break out the the board meeting and the community meeting, so you can see what the cost is associated for that. And for you to, again, like I said, we have other, we have other clients that like to have more meetings. They want to have a pre-designed meeting, they want to have a mid-design meeting, so we we itemize um, based on, you know, your level of involvement that you want to have for those meetings, what that will be, so you can, you can structure that and plan for that accordingly.
And then my other question was, do we have to use your firm if we get approved for the OzLad for the final design and of the the park, or can we RFP it for best price for the taxpayers?
Well, we would certainly like, like you guys to use this, but you're not obligated to in any, in any fashion. You can certainly put it out for RFP and a lot of times um, agencies, agencies do um, to get, you know, uh, if if it comes strictly down to pricing, yeah, that's, that's, that's totally at your disposal.
Thank you.
Anything else on this side?
Oh, ooh, jumping the gun there. So I don't have a problem with the per-meeting because it seems like some, you know, some communities, you probably go through it pretty smoothly. Um, I just want to make, you, so based off of this plan, it's all based off of funding. One of the funding falls apart.
Did you elaborate on that? What do you mean fall apart?
Well, I mean, if funds aren't there, what, I mean, does the plan get cut in half? Is it re- restructured? That's the only concern I have. If if is it all or none?
Are you, are you referring to our capital planning from the village, just about things?
It just worries to me if if we do this and we and we start, because we've got three major big projects and and I'm going to ask questions later and where we stand on all three of these projects, and if we don't have enough money for all three projects, that all of a sudden we don't have enough money for uh, you know, this, this stuff, and we got to cut certain items down the board for stuff that's been committed already. That's my concern.
Certainly, and any, any awards that came in from grant funding from the state would certainly be incorporated to our capital planning for the next fiscal year, and we would determine.
And the reason I asked this, because we, we were told, can't mention the guy's name, like I yelled at at the last meeting, that we had a grant. It was locked solid. We were told that for years. We don't have that grant at Grim Road. So that's my concern. That's why I said, when, when we do grants, I'm kind of leery when grants and all this other stuff. I I I don't believe it until it's awarded and it's stamped and signed and sealed.
Doug, could you speak to um, whether or not you've seen historic problems with the state not delivering on their OzLad grant payments, and then what happens in the event to communities, you know, that they're matched, matched funding portion of it falls through and they're not able to move forward with the project?
Well, first off, um, I have not, I have not been, the grants that I've worked on for over a decade now, I have not seen the state not fulfill their requirement, because once, once you are awarded funding, you essentially enter into a, a contract with the state. Um, that gives you a a two-year deadline from the date that that's executed to complete the project. Um, you, and now the state actually offers um, typically, previously you used to only have the option to get, if you're awarded, say, for example, six hundred thousand, you got fifty percent upfront, right when that contract is signed. So say three hundred thousand, and then you didn't get the other three hundred thousand until the very end, once you prove the project is complete, they come out and they've inspected it, and you submit your reimbursement package. They now offer the option um, that if you, if you want to, you can defer final payment, all payments to the very end of the project. That allows you the ability, the flexibility to um, request and a lot of times obtain an extension to those two years in your, in your grant application. For whatever reason, if if things come up that you need to extend, you have that option, but if you receive your fifty percent upfront, you're kind of locking in those, those two-year, that two-year commitment. Um, and agencies pick, you know, just based on, you know, how they want to proceed. There's no right or wrong way to go about it, it's just whatever makes the most sense for the agency at that time, um, when the grant is executed.
So here's, I'm gonna put my question simpler. So I don't mind meetings, I don't mind the extra charges. If we can sit there and somewhere make a plan that's based off um, payments that are based off of for sure, we can wait, we can delay those until the grants for sure. Once the grant's secured, then we can, then we can release payments. So I don't care about meetings, I don't care about anything else. I just conserve concern about consulting fees being built up and then at the end resolved, there's no grant.
Can I ask for clarification, Ed? So you're talking about like, this, this um, grant writing process being almost like on a contingency basis? Are you talking about the next, the next phase of the project?
Moving forward, because I'm kind of, you know, I may use a word that a former trustee used, kind of salty over being told we had a grant, for sure we had a grant, one hundred percent we had a grant, and we don't have a grant.
Yeah.
And we make all these plans and, you know, this is what's going to happen. Then we spend money for plans. The plans, money is all wasted for power line plans and all this other stuff, all for nothing.
Are, are, if you're talking about, probably Grim Road?
Yeah.
So.
So I just want to prevent another disaster of Grim Road.
Correct.
Of throwing taxpayer money away on something that never is going to happen.
Sure, and I think, I think part of it is whether, is determining on, you know, how the board prioritizes the redevelopment of Centennial Park. You know, as a board, if you tell us that you don't feel that the redevelopment of that park is, should be the priority we should focus on, certainly we could shift gears and look for grant funding and apply for an OzLad grant for other limited spaces within the community.
Let me rephrase this too, because I think the kids need something to do. When I grew up and walked this town, there was only two things to do. Bowling alley and Ben Franklin, that was it. There was really nothing to do. So you got to have sporting events and something for the kids that had a trouble.
Yeah.
So it's important, get that, but I just don't want to pay a consultant going down a dead-end street, that's all.
So for this portion of the of the project itself, really, the only thing we would potentially be out long-term would be the the grant preparation phase fees, which is sixty seven hundred dollars, right? If we don't qualify for the grant, that that's a cost that you doesn't, doesn't move forward for us, and, you know, we don't get the benefit of the grant for, but the remainder cost with the design services, if we don't get the grant this year, we could take that same package, reapply for grant funding next year.
There's nothing to do with this gentleman on, on the, on the Zoom call, it probably has something to do with staff would know better because you guys are dealing with these folks. It's just sitting up here, we're limited information, so we got to trust you guys.
And and again, I think we've, we've demonstrated our commitment to to bringing information forward to the board and making sure you're informed with what we endeavor to do and letting you have your, your appropriate input and give us direction on where you want us to go with it.
I just don't want to have, can't mention his name, that's the situation again.
Can I clarify something just on a bigger picture with this, with the grants and the philosophy of the village, the staff? Is that um, the new finance departments, um, myself, administration, have made a very conscious effort not to include grant money that is not in our bank accounts into the amount of money that we're going to spend on a project. Um, for instance, I recently went down to Springfield twice to try and find one point two million dollars that we were appropriated in a bill, six hundred thousand dollars apiece that um, we never received because it was never actually put in a budget. Later to learn that we will never receive that money. So recently, we resubmitted through a grant writer lobbyist, those requests again now for seven fifty each, but unless we see that money in a budget and get the check, we're not going to put that in for a project. Grim Road is another one, a good example where um, we were very close and still are very close to being able to receive an eighty twenty grant. But until we actually receive that grant and get that money, we can't commit to doing that project. So our philosophy in that regard has changed. So I'd say in this, we got the six hundred thousand, next year we could say, yeah, we have the six hundred thousand in our account, let's go, but I agree, Ed, to go and pay for extra designs and plans and the soft costs, which can be hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars. Um, you know, make sure that that money is in the account and that's a different philosophical change from the finance department. I just wanted, you know, say that because it is, yeah, yeah.
And if I could add just one more thing on the, the master plan cost, part of that process. Very early on is we're working with staff to, to confirm what the, the total project cost, what that budget is specifically for phase one. Um, I, I threw out the, the six hundred thousand dollar match, so you can get a one point two million dollar. Park improvements project for, and only have to put up six hundred thousand of it. That's not to say you have to get to that, get to that amount. That's just the maximum. A lot of agencies like to, want to kind of maximize that, that match, that fifty fifty match, which, which cuts off at that six hundred thousand. Amount, but like I said, that's, you do not have to, um, hit that to feel, you're not going to score any better than other, you know. Any less, if, if you have, you know, less than that amount, we did a handful of, of projects last year that were just small. Neighborhood park improvement projects. There was one that was four hundred and fifty thousand and their match is two hundred and twenty-five. Um, so there, there's no magic number. I feel like you have to maximize that. So. Part of the master plan process will be very early on to confirm what the budget is for, not just for the master plan, but what for phase one. What that, what that is and we'll, we'll design against that or within that to make sure that then, you know, what you, what you end up submitting for. Um, is something that you're, you're committed to spending because the opposite of that. Is that if you get, if you apply and you get awarded funding for it and then halfway through the project, you just, you determine that you can't go forward with the project. Well, one, you have to return the money that you've gotten, you know, that you, that you've received upfront. From DNR because you're not able to complete the project per the, the timeline in the contract. Um, and then DNR has even told us that, um, you get put on a two-year disbarment list where you're not, you're not able to submit for any. Um, IDNR application or any IDNR grants, uh, because the way they view it is the money that they awarded to. To one agency that isn't able to fulfill the, the contractual. Um, requirements that could have gone to some, you know, another agency that could use that to, you know, better the community or to, to, to develop it. That way. So that's just another thing to keep in mind. So I think early on as part of the master plan, we want to confirm that budget for, you know, really, you know. We could kind of have it in mind for, for the master plan, but very specifically for phase one, because want to make sure that the, the application that you submit for. Um, you, you know, kind of positioning you for, um, successes the best we can.
Trustee Peterson?
My questions were answered. Thank you.
Trustee Pierce?
I, I just have a question for, for edification. The OzLad grants in this area that have been granted recently, wasn't there just one to the Antioch Township? For Arena Park?
Six hundred, yes.
Six hundred? And then the last ones were for, there were two that went through to the Tim Osmond Park. I, I think those are the last ones.
Going back sometime, I think that was at the initial development, if I recall.
So that was.
Twenty plus years ago.
Twenty years ago. Does Arena Park have any impact on us since they're in the same general geographic area? But they're different, um.
Different taxing body, different agency making the application.
Okay.
Trustee Bluthert?
You, you just touched on something and I wanted to ask, just to clarify in my head. If we apply for the six hundred thousand and are awarded the six hundred thousand. We get to budget time and we decide we can only do the three hundred thousand dollars worth of work. Do we, i- i- is that what you were referring to where you would be barred and you'd have to give the money back? Or can you, so are we better off submitting for what we know we're going to have, have available to us? And no more? Or, or, or how does that work if we're granted the full thing and it turns out we don't have those full funds, but we are doing work? But maybe not, we're doing three hundred thousand, not six hundred thousand.
I think we want to make sure we flush that out as best we can during the master plan and the phase one development. Um, when, when you are under contract, if you're awarded funding and you're under contract with DNR. Um, you know, they understand that, 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 that things change, budgets change. Um, if you're, you're, you're awarded, you know, a certain amount, you know, for your match. Now you can certainly go above that, you know, because you, you want to make sure that you're, you're matching the amount that they got from you. Or that they, that they're giving, you know, through the program. But if there is a need, a- at any point during the, the process, once you are under contract, if you are. Not, you know, going to spend that same amount that you've been awarded, that's a conversation we have with DNR and, and maybe it's. It's, it's reducing the scope, not necessarily taking away components, because if you do, um, if you request to take, for example, if you. Want to put in a pickleball court and you say, you know what, we don't want to put in pickleball. Um, we want to take that out of the project. Well, they, they do that as well. If that wasn't in the application, you wouldn't have got a point for that. Um, so they, they really don't allow you to do that. You can substitute for something else similar, because we know pickleball is a hot button issue. Um, you could, you could substitute that for a different sport court. Um, and I think you do have the ability to. Um, we would just want to coordinate that with DNR if, if you're not able to provide the match that you had included in your application. What that match would now be and how that relates to the components. Maybe you're just scaling back a little bit. Um, of the components in your application and, you know, rather than just completely take something out.
And, and is there? I probably not, but is there a way of taking projects that are currently under works or will be shortly? And including those in, or does it have to be a brand new project? So something like that we budgeted this year that we're hoping to do and start soon, can that be included in these or can it not be?
So it can be, but it has to be a specific site, like one site specific. It can't be, you can't get funding to, to, to renovate multiple sites. It has to be one.
No, I'm talking one site. So if we were going to do, let's say, we, we've put some money in our budget this year for pickleball courts. If we wanted to do those as a part of Centennial Park. Are we best not starting or doing anything with that until we apply for the grant to include that in our grant package is, is. I just want to make sure that we're, we're not. You know, I want to get as much as we can. And some money this year, we're going to have some money next year. So, but are we going to have six hundred thousand dollars next year in the budget? I don't know, but we have a certain amount this year. We'll have a certain amount next year. And that's why I just want to consolidate as best we can.
Yeah, I would recommend at that point the holding off on, on those particular improvements until, um, submitting for the grant and, and learning if you're awarded funding or not. Because yes, if you had already planned to do, you know, an improvement at Centennial and we have a good idea based on the comprehensive master plan. Um, what those, what those are, kind of like the baseline, you know, it makes sense to, to hold off and include those in. The development of phase one for that, that's funded through the OSAT program.
Thank you. Last question I have is, um, is there a timeframe? So say we get the six hundred, but we know we have. Two hundred per year to spend on the park. Can we, you, could we take? Two or three years to spend that full six hundred or does that have to be in one fiscal year? Does that make sense?
So typically you, you don't have to, you have a, you have a timeframe to. Uh, complete the project. It's, it's two years. So from the date of execution. So. For example, this most recent round of, you know, that was announced back in January, it takes DNR a couple of months to get their contracts sent out. Um, once you have that, you know, once both parties sign the document, there, it's, it's actually noted within, it's called the Unified Grant Agreement. So it notes a lot of ours, it came in at the end of, of, uh, April this year, so April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. They have until April thirtieth of twenty twenty-six. Um, we're backing out a day, uh, you know, to complete the project. So. Whether you're spending, you know, if you're, if you're, if you're spending the, you know, bulk of that upfront in the project. Or waiting to the very, you know, we're closer to the end, that really, that really doesn't matter. Um, but that two years sounds like a lot. Um, but it goes quickly, particularly in the climate that we live in, because you can only build, um, you know, six to seven months out of the year if you're lucky. Um, so it's, it's a matter of, of developing a, a schedule early on to get the, you know, construction documents and everything. Uh, prepared, put out to bid, have a contractor under award. Um, yeah, it goes quickly. You can. If it's, if it's something you know you want to go forward with regardless of funding or not, you know, you, you can begin, you know. Construction document development, even before you're under, under contract with, with the state, if you really want to. Sometimes we. Agencies want us to do that to kind of eat into that two-year timeframe as much as you can. The only thing you can't do, you can't go out to bid and you can't start building a project obviously until you have that, that executed agreement. So you, you can eat in that two years a little bit if you want, but you're just doing that at the risk of, you know, if you don't get, if you don't get funded, if you're not on the list, then. You don't get that amount that you applied for.
All right, thank you. Trustee Peterson?
I just have one question is for Mary. Uh, we're going to continue to have baseball fields there, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So that was all I wanted to know.
All right. So, um, if the board approves, I would, uh, suggest we move this along to the. Appropriate for that Friday meeting, the twenty-fourth for discussion consent. Okay, for, for discussion. All right. Thank you. Um, next item is the, uh, discussion regarding selection of a construction manager. Uh, we have, um, our village administrator, uh, Gutcho. I'm sure, um, our, uh, public works director. Dennis Heimbrot might have some things to say about the process they went through to get to this point.
Sure. Thank you. Um, so as the board knows, for, for several months now, staff has been working on selecting a. Construction manager that we'd like to bring to the board for recommendation to deliver our public works facility in our village hall renovation. With the current project that we have going on, I know the board has had some concerns, um, relative to the timelines of that project and some of the costs of that project. And in reviewing the delivery methods, we feel that the construction manager arrangement is going to offer us the most cost effective. And tightest timeline to get those projects delivered to us. So about, uh, three, three months ago or so, we posted a request for qualifications and proposal for cut construction managers.
Just, um, just for the, just, uh, note that we did two different types of, uh, bids.
Sure, sure. If you'd like me to cover that. So the fir- the first. Option that we explored was looking at a, a general contractor arrangement combined with an owner's rep arrangement. Um, and speaking with others who have used that sort of delivery method. Um, we felt that introducing an owner's rep, while, you know, there may be some value added, really just adds another layer of component of a. Another layer to this whole project and additional costs that we feel is unnecessary. And then with that, um. While they help advise the problems in the works and the big decision still comes back on staff to make. Um, so really in trying to avoid that, streamline the efficiencies and avoid delays, we just didn't feel like that was a good arrangement for us. So we had gone out to the request for qualifications proposals, received about a half dozen, uh, proposals. Um, we selected our top three and conducted interviews, um, in collaboration with our architects, Williams. Um, the good news is the, the firms that Dennis and I selected, um, walking into the interviews, we were told. Um, our architects had extensive experience with all three firms and we couldn't make a bad decision. So that was, that was reassuring for us. And as we walked in, we really understood how important it was for us to get this right and select the right partner. We was truly going to understand the village's needs, the timelines. I think we all get agree, the budget constraints that we're operating within to deliver these, these projects on a specific budget that the board is willing to fund. So some of the criteria that we use to evaluate the construction manager firms that we, we looked at. Um, is, is their experience and particularly their percentage of municipal work versus private sector work. Um, having a true understanding of our needs. Of course, the cost effectiveness of their proposals and their ability to meet deadlines historically with their other projects. So after going through that entire process, um, we came to the conclusion rather quickly that FQC, which is Frederick Quinn Corporation. Arose to the top is, is our preferred, um, construction manager. We really feel that FQC's history and their, and their, uh, the work that they deliver for other communities does. Stand out in terms of cost of their proposal, the alignment with our project's goals. And they understand the village's unique requirements related to how we're going to get these projects built and the timelines that we want to do them in. So rather than me sitting up here belaboring the issue, um, I'm going to introduce Jack Hayes, who is president of FQC. And he's here tonight to answer any questions the board has, but I've also asked him to walk through the proposal. So you understand what you're getting for the dollar amount and then also kind of differentiate. The experience that he hopes we will have under a construction manager arrangement versus a general contractor. Jack?
Thank you, Jeff. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having me here tonight with you. That's a, that's a great intro. And so let me, let me maybe walk through a little bit of what a construction manager does, if you're not familiar with that. So, um, I think most people are familiar with a general contractor model where you, the architect puts together a set of documents. Um, during that time, might the architect or engineer put together some estimates of what opinions of cost of what they think it's going to be. And then you go out on bid day. And you give the contractor, the contracting community maybe three weeks or so. To put together their bid based on a thick set of drawings and a really big, thick project manual. And three weeks later, you open the book, you open the bids and whoever has the best number that day. You then enter into a long-term relationship with that is probably one of the biggest expenses that you're going to undertake as a board. Um, so in three weeks' time, they've taken probably a year's worth of work that the design team has done or more. Assimilated it into a number and said, this is what you have to live with for the next twelve or eighteen months. And you are, you, as a public body, are then un- under the obligation, according to Illinois procurement law. To take the low bid on that day. Many times it turns out pretty well. There are times though, when it gets a little complicated because the general contractor. Um, is, their interests are not aligned with yours. Their interest, they are a business and their business is to. Drive costs down and maximize their profit in the execution of the work. Now they do want to do a good job. But that, how good they do on your project doesn't preclude them from going out and getting the next job. Rarely happens that somebody performs so poorly that they can't go get the next job. So I set that up as a little bit of an introduction to construction management where. You know, you're early in the design process right now with Williams Architects. And we're here in front of you today to talk about construction management. Because the relationship with the construction management is one of partnership and advocacy. We're your. We're your construction advisor from this point all the way through turnover of the building. Training, setup, move in and beyond to make sure that. The projects deliver the success that you're looking for. So we go through. The early phases, the, the, one of the key distinctions is that we're involved during the design phase, so pre-construction services. We partner, we meet every week or every two weeks with the administration and with the architect team. And we talk through the entire process of how we get from today to going out for bid. Um, so the things that we do are cost estimates, we'll do it at schematic design, design development, fifty percent construction documents, ninety-five percent construction documents. So we're monitoring the cost of the project every step of the way during design, before we ever go out on the street to trade contractors. Um, during that time, the scope of the project and the budgets are not always going to be in alignment. So part of our job is to help advise both the design team and the owner, the, the administration. What are some things that we can look at to identify ways to get the scope and value that you're looking for, for the best possible price? So we look at constructability. We'll look at structural systems, mechanical systems. Um, foundations, earthwork. Basically everything. We, we go through all thirty-two divisions of construction and we identify what is, what is the optimal blend? Of quality and value for the money that you have available to spend. I like to pick on light fixtures because they're really simple. We do a lot of public sector buildings. You can walk into a lot of public sector buildings, look up in the lobby and look at a fifteen thousand dollar light fixture. Real easy. You can also look at a twenty-five hundred dollar light fixture and it looks pretty darn good. So though, that's where we help understand from your perspective, what is your value proposition? Um, we've worked with municipalities, literally where money was no object. We wanted. Solar panels, geothermal, we wanted a net zero building, we wanted it to be a showpiece. We wanted the. The softits on the outside of the building to change colors based on the season that we were in. I mean, it, it's, it's amazing, some of the things that go into public buildings. But we respond to what your needs are and how we can, how we can provide value during pre-construction. To keep the project on task. That's basically our job. Keeping the project on task for quality. Cost and schedule. That's, that's our main emphasis. So during pre-construction. Um, cost estimating, constructability review, value engineering, logistics, and then bid preparation. So the next step in the process is procurement and going out to bid. As a construction manager, we manage your construction project. So we are your eyes and ears every step of the way. So when we go out to bid, we go out to the trade contractor. We don't go out to general contractor. So we go out to excavation, earthwork, site utilities. Concrete, steel, painting, drywall, framing, electrical, mechanical, all of them. One of the benefits that provides to public sector clients is complete transparency. You know who you're going to work with, who's going to be your electrician, who's going to be your mechanical contractor and what their number is. Everything's open book, everything's. Everything's open book. Everything's probably opened in this room. Every bid is open. You see all the numbers. And again, as a public agency, you're obligated to take the low responsive responsible bidder. But now we're doing it across thirty trades and we can look at their financials and look at their um staffing plans. We can look at their capabilities. We can look at their references. And instead of doing it for one contractor, we're doing it for everybody who's actually going to build your building. Because one of the misnomers about general contracting is that they build the building. Most general contractors either perform concrete or carpentry. That's it. Maybe both, but very few. So they don't really build the building. They manage the construction on their behalf. We're managing the construction on your behalf. And we're helping select the low responsive responsible bidders on bid day. Because we're going out to thirty different trade contractors, one of the things that we've found to be advantageous to municipalities is we then can leverage and improve the probability of more local participation with local trade contractors. Many times what we'll do before we go out to bid is we'll hold a local trade contractor fair so that we can solicit interest and get people to understand what is coming and understand what the bidding criteria are for bonding and insurance and certified payroll and lien waivers and all the public agency criteria they need to follow to make sure that they're successful. So that's procurement. Then we move into so then so after the bids are in hand, we now have all the cost of construction. So before we break ground, we then provide to you a guaranteed maximum price. We tell you what the cost, the total cost of the project is going to be with contingency, with all the trade costs before we break ground. That's our guarantee. So now you have the cost of the project known before we ever hold the shovel turning you know, the breaking ground day before we take pictures. Our guarantee to you is every element of that project that's within scope is going to be delivered within that guaranteed maximum price or below on time. So we're responsible for quality, responsible for schedule, we're responsible for cost. Our philosophy is every project has to be delivered really well, on time and under budget within that guaranteed maximum price. And our history is we return one and a half percent of the cost of the project to the owners at the completion of the project as savings on the project. We just sent a a deductive change order to Highland Park for a fire station. We just completed for them about a six million dollar project. We just gave them back a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So it's real. I mean, we we manage, we're managing your money. But we're managing our relationship and our goal is to deliver on our promises. That's what we try to do. So that's the guaranteed maximum price. And then we move from bidding into construction where we are your eyes and ears on site. We open the gate in the morning, we shut the gate at night. Full-time supervision, we coordinate all the trades, we're responsible for quality, schedule, safety, change orders. There are change orders. I know that will come up. Every construction project that's ever been done has a change order. Just make sure I'm clear on that. But there's a way to manage through that because of the way that we structure our GMP. Um, so we we are on site every every step of the way. We coordinate all the trades. We hold weekly trade contractor meetings. We hold weekly owner meetings. Communication is key to us. We're happy to come to board meetings and give you updates on the status of the project, both in terms of all the fun that's happening as well as the status of cost and schedule and how we're tracking towards the object, project objectives. So you work your way through construction and then you have to turn the building over. Most commercial public sector buildings today have pretty sophisticated systems in them. Training is important. Setup is important. Transition into who's going to operate the building is important. O and M manuals, maintenance, warranties, all of that stuff at the end is all really important stuff. We manage your initiation of the building to get the project up and running for you so that it's 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 being operated the way it should be. And then closeout warranties, twelve month callbacks during that period of time, coming back within that twelve month period to make sure if there's anything. Because everything comes with a a minimum twelve month warranty. Some pieces of equipment come with five years or ten years of the roof will be a twenty year or a thirty year warranty. So during that first twelve months, we always stay in touch, make sure that the work is going to be followed through on if there's any callback items to be addressed. Where your once your construction manager, we're always your construction manager on those projects. So I think I company is, thank you. Uh, so we've been around since nineteen sixty-six, organized in nineteen eighty as Frederick Quinn Corporation. Um, in recent twenty, twenty-five years, nearly all of our work has been in the public sector. We do a little bit of work in institutional like um not-for-profit. We do some church work. Also, all institutional, commercial sector work. Right now, we're working for the federal government and we're working for numerous municipalities, park districts and school districts in the northeastern Illinois region. We don't travel too far. Uh, we're a mid-sized company in the world of construction. We do about, we at any one point in time, we're carrying around two hundred, two hundred and fifty million dollars worth of construction on our books. And uh, we love to build and make clients happy. This is what we do every day.
Dennis, you have anything you are heavily involved in this. Do you have anything you want to add? Covered, okay. Um, can um just for transparency, and this is an open bidding process. Jeff, can you talk about the the dollar amounts that came in at each um we had on the three bids?
I don't have the uh proposals in front of me. I could certainly go grab them um from my office. But for um FQC's proposal, um their fixed total proposed fixed price for this project is eight hundred and ninety-six thousand, five hundred dollars.
For both projects, correct? And um, one of the things that I learned was their fee for the construction management is the two ninety-five. The other general conditions, meaning stuff on site is included in this number plus the insurance and bonds, which you must have on these jobs. So the actual fee for the project for this construction management for both the village hall and the public works is two ninety-five to the construction manager. Any, okay, well, I'm sure there's going to be lots of questions. So, all right. Um, questions on the right side here. Patrice, do you have any questions? Trusty Blueheart?
All right. Um, thanks for coming out. We'll send you your twelve hundred dollars, I guess, like every other contractor in the village.
Still on? No, um, we don't. We don't charge by meeting. I'll be here as much as you need.
I I I've talked to Jeff quite a bit about this and 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 I I understand the overall thing and I think you you laid it out pretty well. I have some concerns and it's it's interesting. Trusty Maisick brought it up earlier about the grant side of this, but and this isn't the actual contract, so it's kind of hard for me to say what would be in a final negotiated contract, but when we're talking about a total proposed fixed fee, when is that payable? How is that payable? My my man, I'll let me lay out a scenario for you. I I love the pre-construction. I'll call it a feasibility study is the way I would word it because at this point, we have dollars available, but we don't know how far those dollars are going to go. So we go through all of this where people are telling us, oh, the budget's going to be ten million or the budget's going to be this. And then all of a sudden, we actually go out to bid and we get bids that are fifteen, sixteen million dollars, you know, but then we can't do that project. How does that impact your agreement with us? And tied to that, would you be willing to consider doing the construction or the pre-construction phase as a separate contracted item? In case we didn't couldn't proceed on these other projects?
Okay, yeah, that's a real um common question that we get asked, so it's it's very astute. The only fee that we charge for up and through bidding is our pre-construction fee. That's it, the twenty thousand dollars. Okay? So um before you start any construction, the only fee you're going to pay Frederick Quinn Corporation is twenty thousand dollars. So you're protected to a certain extent in this case because my understanding is that there's a desire to phase these projects and do the village hall first and then do public works. If that's the way it unfolds, so now you're now you're kind of overlapping a little bit. You're going to you're going to pay pre-construction. We're going to go into construction of the village hall project. And you'll know what those costs are before you then go into construction on the public works project. So it it's a little bit of a subtlety here because of the desire to pull the village hall project into potentially starting construction later this year. So so to take that one step further, so you'll only pay the pre-construction fee before construction. But you'll know what the cost of the village hall project is before you pay any more dollars to Frederick Quinn Corporation. You're not going to be paying any CM fee, insurance, bonds or general conditions until we're in construction. That's when those fees start triggering in. Does that make sense?
No, it does. It does. Um, I would need to see a final contract to see if how the wording is. Because my my concern is is that, yes, like the village hall, we have funds available, obviously. Else we wouldn't even be having this discussion. We also have a need and and a want to get these done as soon as possible. Um, that being said, my concern is the sticker shock of pricing. And 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 what we think and what we've had supposed experts tell us in the past is going to cost us ends up being quite a bit more. And even the architects and everyone else, when they come in with their plans, design like we we have unlimited resources and we have to sit there and start making cuts and and getting rid of everything. So my concern is we think we have enough to build these. And my concern would be entering into any type of contract that doesn't give us an out if we don't continue that portion of the contract.
Yeah, we're I'm completely comfortable with the idea that you're only obligated to the pre-construction fee um until you award construction contracts. I'm I'm completely.
Brett, can I I sort of clarify one thing that was not mentioned in the uh previous discussion? Um, which for transparency and everyone's knowledge, in the meetings with Williams Architects, which have been going on for how many years now? Three, four years? FQC has sat in a lot of those meetings already to date. It has come up with the numbers themselves of the one point five for the village hall. And then we told them the number, you know, the ten to twelve for the public works. So they've been instrumental in those discussions already and getting them down to those numbers. That's just for everyone's knowledge. This is not the first time they sat in those meetings. They you could you could tell the board. It's probably important for them to know what you've been doing with Williams Architects already, so.
Yeah, agreed. I appreciate that. We we have been participating um as a resource for Williams in their development of the plans to date. The village hall project has been moving along in a in an appropriate direction and um, we haven't budgeted any current drawings with them because of this process. We kind of stopped. Um, so that's the next, the first step out of the box is to take their current drawings and see where they're at and do a budget. On the public work side, I there's some work to do there. Okay, there there that that project's it's got some work to do, especially since we don't know the site yet because the site you you can't site is a given cost. We just don't know what that given cost is. You can't really change a lot of expenses that go into a site. You have to do what you got to do. Um, but I want to make sure that that you hear from me that as part of our pre-construction services, we're doing cost estimates every step of the way. We're not waiting till the time we go out to bid and find out how much it's going to cost. And that's a core competency of Frederick Quinn Corporation. Um, so if we're if we're doing our job well, which I hope we are going to, there may be some surprises on bid day that we expected um, drywall to be a hundred and twelve thousand and it was a hundred and seventy thousand. That's going to happen. But the electrical contractor we thought was going to be two fifty came in at one ninety. There's going to be this, right? But there's going to be a lot of integrity in the total number, the way we put our packages together and the way we put our estimates together. So before we get to bid day, we are, as a team, we're going to see multiple estimates so that we reduce and minimize the surprises on bid day.
The construction management fee. Okay, it is broken down here to forty thousand. So if, for example, if we only did the village hall, then we'd only be looking at forty thousand of the two hundred and ninety-five.
Correct.
Um, that makes sense. I mean, obviously, there are two different types of construction projects. We're really doing a build out and a remodel of an existing structure versus totally brand new construction wherever we decide to build it.
Right.
Or the other. I would expect that the price per month would be a sizable difference based on those two types of construction, but they're really not. One for the general conditions of twenty-six thousand versus twenty-two thousand. It seems like there'd be a lot more work for your role on a day-to-day basis with the new construction than there would be for the remodel. Can you touch on that a little bit and just?
Yeah, uh, um small projects are actually more of a pain in the back than larger projects. Because the the doubt you're you're dealing with almost the same number of trades, even though you're not building a new building. You're still dealing with a lot of different trades. You're there's a lot of unknowns in an existing building. They take more time. They take more energy. Smaller projects take as much time as larger projects. So the while we are able to provide some efficiencies on the renovation project because we don't need a trailer. Um, we don't need some of the expenses that go along with managing the project because we have an existing building we can operate out of, even though it's going to be under construction. Um, there's just as much time and effort that are going to go into that smaller project than there are going to be on the larger project because the larger project, you're going to have, you're going to have a three hundred fifty or a seven hundred fifty thousand dollar earthwork package. You don't spend a lot of time with the earthwork guy. Once he's got his grading plan and he knows where what the um the lower elevation is, he puts it in his computer on his so he doesn't. So there's there's efficiencies on larger projects and larger contracts.
One more on the general conditions. You you say four months for the village hall, twelve months for public work. I'm assuming that means if it went six months for the village hall, that we would it would be another forty-four thousand dollars. But you're calling it a proposed fixed fee. So is that four months a max or is that adjustable depending on how many months you actually are working?
So based on the information that we have, as the mayor indicated, we've been working together on, we have a good knowledge of what's going on in that building. I've personally been in the building. I've been up on the roof. I've been above the ceiling. I know what's going on inside that building. Um, based on the drawings that have been done to date and and our understanding, we're we're comfortable with the with the four months. But I do have in here too that we will present a final project, uh, construction schedule before we start construction for review and approval by the by the village.
Okay, so that fixed proposal could
If 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 if, for example, the renovation turns into a renovation and an addition, it's not going to be four months.
No, I get I understand it.
Right? So if it stays generally the what we've all been talking about up to this point and it's of the same character and nature of what we expect, then I would expect that four months to be appropriate.
Um, number of staff. What what would you envision? How many of your staff would be on site daily for the village hall project versus the
We'll have one person full time on each project.
Okay.
So we what we do, we we're a little bit different than a lot of construction managers in the industry. We don't self-perform any work. We're a pure construction manager. Some construction managers try to bid some of the work and do it as well. We're a pure construction manager. So what we've done is we've taken the role of superintendent and we've combined that with some of the responsibilities of a typical construction project manager who sits in the office. And what we've done is we we've merged those some of those roles together so that so that And what we've done is we we've merged those some of those roles together so that so the talent of the individual that we put in the field. Is. More than a typical construction superintendent. They're running the submittals, the RFIs, the change orders. They're. They're doing their three week look aheads. They're not just walking around the site. Saying, you know, did you do this? Did you do this? They're doing that as well. But they're. They're providing a level of. Professional construction management oversight that's a little bit different.
Okay. And I mean, you've. Done a really good job of answering some concerns I had. Um. Last question is. This guaranteed max price.
Mm hmm.
Within scope. There's always a caveat of.
Well, sure.
Um. And I'm not going to ask you for an exact number and you can on this project, obviously, but in your past. Is is that guaranteed max price something that you do regularly or is that a standard?
Pretty common. Yeah, I would say. I would say. Well over half, maybe sixty seventy percent of our construction man. Contracts are guaranteed or at risk.
And of those, obviously, there's going to be issues that pop up on all of them. What would you say is your? Batting average for staying under the guaranteed maximum price?
That's a good question as well. There have been a couple of projects where we went all the way up to it and we limited it out. There have been a couple. Most of them had to do with. Um. Projects that had a substantial. Addition and renovation to an existing older building. Okay. Um. Where we used all the contingency because of existing conditions that were just too. Messy. But. That's a couple out of a hundred, let's say. So the large majority of our projects, we return. Savings from our contingency from the guaranteed maximum price contingency. To the owner, the large majority.
Right? And then, um. I don't. This is probably not a question you could answer, but i- in regards to. Disputes regarding what's in the scope and what's out. You're you're. Producing the scope.
We are.
So now you come back to us and say, oh, this isn't in the scope when we thought it was or so on. Is this? Does that turn into a legal manner or is this handled in some different way with this type of? Contract or how is that?
We we try. I mean, we're your partner in this process, so. Um. We're doing a project for the Village of Buffalo Grove right now. They bought an existing building. And they're converting it in.
This is their agreement according to.
Oh, did I? Did I? Did I do a typo? Oh, of course. Sorry about that.
Not within scope.
I apologize. Um. So I, uh. We're we're doing a project for them and. We have an existing building that has a two story office space on it and then a big warehouse space next to it. In the in the two story office space, there was a, uh. There was a stairwell. Going up to the second floor, a a a two stories straight stairwell that went up to the second floor. And, um. That area. Didn't it wasn't specified that that. Area would get ceilings. For some reason. Design missed it. We missed it. Something happened. So it wasn't in the scope. But they needed ceilings in that area. That lighting was specified. The sprinklers were specified. The HVAC was specified, but it didn't have sprinklers. So we gave the ceiling guy a change order for it. We just took that out of contingency. So that wasn't in scope, but it was surely in the intent of the project.
Okay. Um, that's all I've got right now. Thank you very much.
Yep.
So trustee Bluthar asked most of my questions and then some, so he did a great job, but. Just really two minor additional points I had. So the pricing, I know you broke down for village hall and public work separately. But is that pricing based on we have to sign up for both of them? Like, let's just say we decided just to focus on public work or I'm sorry, village hall now. Will that change your numbers? I don't know what we're going to do yet, but just asking with that.
No, I don't. That's why I broke them up the way that I did. I think that those numbers are reasonable if if the project gets. Split up and you only do one, I think those numbers are reasonable and I I I think I can live with those.
Okay. And then my other question, which trustee Bluthar had kind of touched on, but. It just is always scary with construction. You know, you say four months at X dollars.
Mm hmm.
Will you ever negotiate and do the contract if we are just sticking to the plan? There's no surprise. Like you will be in and out in the four months, so it's not this open. Like, what if it takes seven, eight, nine months? It's kind of an unknown.
Yeah, so so when we go out to bid. In the procurement phase, we publish a schedule. An actual construction schedule by trade. Which demonstrates. How long that project is going to take. On one hand. So if for some reason between now and the time we go out to bid. The four months becomes five months, we'll have to have that conversation to make sure because there's a reason why it went for to five months. But if it stays at four months and we go out to bid and all the and we've got all the bids and the contractors sign up for it. We're then obligated. If it takes five months, that's that's our problem.
Okay. I think that was that was it. It is a sticker shock for sure to look at, but thank you for your time putting it together.
Trustee Pierce.
You mentioned there's a way to handle change orders. Because, um. My right now, I think what they're trying to avoid. Is change order surprise.
Mm hmm.
Um, as you mentioned, opening a box up and having a product done. And and I'm kind of getting the impression the whole purpose of this exercise. Is to take a bunch of the village money, pour it in a box, shake it, pour some water, milk in and concrete mix. Open it up in the buildings, all done and a guaranteed price guaranteed time. With no concerns because. I think the last project we got going on over here. Has some surprises still coming at us, probably to to another couple hundred thousand dollars or so. Um, so. I know we don't want surprises. But you said there's a way to handle change orders. How do you handle them? I I got the impression you. You budget a price and you come up with a contingency amount and then you say this is the final price we'll do it for. And if you don't use the whole contingency amount, you that's what you repay back.
That's exactly right.
If there's change orders, then you.
It comes out of that contingency.
What if the what if the contingency doesn't cover the amount of change orders?
If the change orders that have been accumulated against that contingency are all in scope, that's on us. If there's a if some if something comes up along the way and. There was something that was bid as an alternate and it wasn't accepted at the beginning. And somewhere during the course of the project, a decision is made by the owner says, no, we have to have that third bathroom, let's say. There's not a third bathroom. So we have to have the third bathroom. That's a change in scope. So we we're going to want to change. Order to the guaranteed maximum price for the third bathroom.
Okay.
Okay, but if it's if it's if we don't have those conversations about a third bathroom or whatever the topic might be. Then it's all within the GMP.
Okay, so can I ask a question, Scott, of your question? So I think, um, so. I think what you're asking is and he we can answer the question is we went through construction management, which is one thing. And the construction management at risk. And I think that that at risk is what is the key. To them. Taking any risk for the cost exceeding what we say they can do it for.
I think he answered that.
Okay, okay, I did. I that at that at risk. Is, um. Was a key term that we learned about through the. Through the process, which I didn't know about before this.
Okay, so. Since you're talking about at risk, we've got a construction manager right now. How long has he been the construction manager? Is he at risk?
Where's that?
At the park. Don't we have somebody billing us four hundred and some odd thousand?
That's a general contractor. And then the board approved Strand. To be the construction manager, which again. Um, they they're out there a lot, but they are not at risk.
Okay.
Okay, so and how much we paying Strand?
Just shy of four hundred and fifty thousand.
To independently observe what's going on over there right now.
Yes, correct.
Okay, has that been in place the whole time or is that just been in place since, uh? We replace he who should not be named.
No, that was a contract.
Oh, I love that.
That was a contract signed previously.
Okay, thank you. Um, so then my other my other, the the major issue I have with this is, um. You mentioned, uh, we've been involved all along. We kind of know you're at one point two for the village hall renovation.
Keeps going down.
I honestly, honestly. I don't know what we're what we're planning for village hall. Because the last I saw was seven million dollars, glass cathedrals, additions, village halls, this.
I saw that.
Village meeting rooms, that special rooms for this special meeting. And and it was a monstrosity. That's the last thing I saw. And the same thing with the the public works department. It was a fourteen million dollar, um, Taj Mahal that. God bless our public works people and our village hall workers and everything. They deserve to work in nice, safe environments. Um. And but it was it was. Budget busting. And that's the last I've seen. And I don't think we've made a decision whether it's going to be a a godforsaken, uh, pole barn or a, uh. Or a, um. A a nice building. I don't think the board's made a decision. What we're going to build and how much we're going to spend on each of them. And I don't know. At what step in this process that should be done. Do we say this is what we're going to spend and this is what we're going to. Attain for? Or do we? Hire you and let you come to us and say this is what you're going to spend and this is what you're going to attain for? I don't know.
No, I think a critical part of this process is going to be the board. Giving very specific budget guidance and I feel like a lot of that those conversations have been had at the quarterly planning meeting. And that's where some of these conversations have. Derived into the current concepts for the building, you know, based on about two million dollars. For village hall. Um, all in, right, including including the soft costs of. Dune desks, that sort of thing. Um, and then for the public works facility, you know. Depending on who we talk to on the board, you know, it's ten million dollars, it's twelve million dollars, but I think that at some point the board has to. Establish what budget they're comfortable with. Because that allows Jack and FQC to get to work. I'm taking the plan and revising it and finding cost savings, cost saving measures and some value engineering that they can do to help. Bring the project into alignment with the budget. So the board can understand what that means, right? There's. There's a big difference probably between a construction guy who understands there's a big difference in the facility that you're going to get. For ten million dollars versus twelve million dollars, right? It's it's not like you're just shaving off. You know, five square feet or taking off an office there. It's going to be a very different building. But we have to have that budget number. From the board and direction from the board so that Jack and his team can start working with Williams, our architects. To scale down those costs so that we could bring bring a final final design and schematic to the board for review. Hope that makes sense.
Okay. Thank you. I'll turn it over to he who shall be mentioned.
Oh, I did my AI. I got it. I got two hundred questions. On my AI. So I could think of thirty five. So I've been pushing for an owner's rep first meeting, got outvoted. Library saved. Over a million dollars having a construction. Construction owners rep. Represent the taxpayer. I think I believe. I heard the fire department is already over budget. Because. They don't have. Construction manager and owner's rep representing the taxpayer. Um. I gave a speech saying we every time I do. And there's projects I do certificates. I'm an insurance guy. I do certificates. That, uh. Especially Chicago Public Schools. There's additional insurance. It takes me thirty minutes to type out the additional insurance and the wording. That Chicago Public Schools, other construction products always in there. An owner's rep, always in the wording. This is this for the project of this size. We don't have one. We wasted and and late in the project for the park. Wasted. Supposed to be on. When this was all said and done. When this project was put together, it was an eight million dollar project. On the books. Could have been an eight million dollar project. And it's it's sculpted to be double the money. Double. And it got in by. Guy I can't name. By pollution costs. Uh, other nonsense. Um, misinformation. Um. It became eight million dollars. When I say double the cost and everybody got their tax bill, double the cost. Um, that's why we don't know what the other buildings, if we got money. Um. Taxpayers didn't have representation. So you got some guy and and. We had people in here saying that guy. Can oversee contractors and contractors are here. For their pocketbook. They 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 really don't care. They see a government checkbook. And. They're going to double charge, triple charge. They're going to be lazy out there where you're. You know, going to sit there and be our rep. To make sure, just like you said. Uh, you know, we just spent. Almost sixty thousand dollars on a window and that window, we could have maybe got the ten. Who knows?
Mm hmm.
I, you know, I. Two thousand. Two thousand miles as as a crow flies. You're not going to find a sixty thousand hour window in a park. No possible way. You might find it. You might find a ten, maybe. I still don't think you'd find the window. Of ten thousand hours in a park. But. Be that as it may. Cost of overrun. Had we had a person like you representing. The taxpayer. From keeping people. The board. The construction, you're the medium. People don't understand what your job is. You're the medium guy. Doesn't matter how much you make. It's how much you save. And keeping. Keeping the money from everybody else. And putting the money back in. So whatever your costs are. It's going to put back in. So if you're charging whatever, a million dollars. And and this project was at eight million, you charged us a million dollars, we're at nine million. You saved us. We're at sixteen million. You saved us how much millions? You did a fantastic job. Are you interrupting me? I wasn't there. I I that's what I thought. So. I'm all for. I gave my speech. I don't know why we didn't have a gentleman like you or a friend. Firm like you. Doesn't even make sense. Because I think that project across streets is going to be is from what I hear is already over budget. Library was saved over a million dollars. Because they had a representative. And and it just does. It just doesn't make sense. It's late in the game. We should have had it over there.
Thank you. I concur. Trustee Peterson.
Uh, all of my questions are answered. I'm I'm, um. Aware of a construction manager, uh, in my previous job, so, um. We had a six million dollar building go up and. It came in under budget.
Great.
Lot of arguments, but it came in under budget.
Oh, it doesn't mean that we're not going to argue.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I I mean, you know. I work. We work well with with Williams, but that doesn't mean that we always get along.
Yeah.
So but that's that's but that's why you were hiring us is to advocate that we have those arguments. Positive, forward thinking, constructive debate.
Let me ask this question. You would beef up our certificate too. To make sure our certificate.
Oh, yeah, you are. I my guess is our certificate would. You'll be really happy with our.
That anybody in this room Starbucks drop a coffee, our certificates. Are weak.
I I will guarantee you our certificates are not weak. We we.
I would.
Guys through a lot of.
That's why my complaint for the last ten years. Than our certificate.
We don't even.
I can't mention the guy's name who 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 like his his name can't be.
He who shall not be mentioned?
No, it can't be mentioned.
I we don't accept certificates. We have to have. We have to see the endorsements.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you.
I I'm sorry, by certificates, you mean like insurance certificates?
Correct.
The ones we're paying a hundred and eighty one point five mil, a hundred and eighty one point five thousand for?
Yeah, but there's endorsements after the certificate.
Is that the number I have in here?
That's the number you have in there. Hundred eighty one thousand five.
Insurance and bonds, but basically it's all insurance. Yeah. Yeah, I know, but you you can't do business in public sector in Illinois without them. Period. It's not. It's not. That's not. That's not our money. That's just.
Oh, I know. I.
It's going right at.
I have to.
I. All right. So hold on, right? Hold on, let's get some order back. All right. So. Trustee Pierce still has the floor.
Um, I I actually, I have.
Oh, yeah, okay, I got so confused. All right.
I was.
All right, let's start. Let's have trustee Peterson have the floor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um. Would you be the one person? Um, that would be our construction manager or how many are on your team?
Okay, so we have, um, a team of. Our pre-construction team, we have our chief estimator Fred, who's been doing this for forty four years. Um, and then our pre-construction manager Mark, who's been doing this for about twenty years. And then John Elanardo is our director of construction. He, um, has been doing this for over thirty years. Our field person, Adam, who we brought to the interview, would build the public works facility. Um, so he he would be our one person on site. Um, so he, he would be our one person on site. But then he's supported by John in the office who comes out on site every week, comes to the OAC meetings. Um, I'll be at, I would say half of the OAC meetings. Um, and then we have our, our administrative team, uh, finance, accounting.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Anything else? Trustee Pierce, and then I'll go back over here on one more.
Um, to our Chadman. Um, to address something that trustee Macy said, because I thought it was a little misleading, probably unintentionally. Is there property tax dollars being used for the park across the street?
No, uh, the bond payments for those projects are being paid through the central business district tax, sales tax funds.
So it's sales tax, it's grants, and what else?
Sales tax, grants, uh, there is no taxpayer money, quote unquote.
Well, there, there's sales tax, there's sales tax, there's no property tax.
Tax funds are going to.
Okay, all right, so us constructing a beautiful park that the residents are gonna like is not impacting their property taxes, which I've heard a tremendous amount of complaining about this week, the unfairness of them.
Correct, and, and, and that same philosophy is gonna carry through for the Village Hall renovations and the public works facility. That is also being, the bonds are also being serviced through these, um, business district tax funds, sales tax funds.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Blueheart.
Um, just real quick, just to clarify something. Your, your proposed fixed fee, it's not based on a percentage? Or is it of the total cost of the project?
Well, in, in, in my pad it is, but it was a requirement of the RFQ that we responded to.
Okay.
It converted to a fixed fee.
Okay. Um, because I was just wondering, it's like, for example, if you do such a tremendous job and we were able to build it for $2 million less. Your fees structure now is maybe 15% versus where if we go over budget, we're it's less. You, you come less.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can talk about that and, and put together an agreement that makes sense to everybody. Our, the only thing that we typically charge a fixed fee for is pre-construction services. Everything else is typically a percentage. And then a, a dollar, a fixed dollar value per month times the number of months for the project.
Cause that's the, that's what I've understood, come to understand is that usually it's a percentage.
It is.
And that's where I wanted to make sure, I mean.
Typically is, but I was just trying to be respectful of the request.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, thank you. So, um, let's move this to that Friday meeting for consideration of this proposal, which would then also, um, turn into, uh, a written contract at that point, which more specific, specificity, um, for the projects, if that makes sense.
Yeah, typically, this is, this is kind of a common approach that we take, where we just start, let's, let's just kind of get the basics down. Get the pre-construction agreed to, and then the AIA contract negotiation.
Sure.
Take two months.
Okay.
You know, I'm, from our standpoint, if we agree on the pre-construction services, let's just get to work.
Okay, and this is more of like an engagement agreement with you guys.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just, I guess I didn't say anything. I, I'm impressed with what you've told us, um, and I agree with staff, um, you know, their recommendations, but I am, I'm very impressed.
Thank you, appreciate it. All right, um, can I just have like 10 seconds here, just real?
15.
Okay, 15.
Just don't go over.
Okay, so general contracting, construction management. A typical general contractor is gonna put his supervision into the cost of the work and add 10% for overhead and profit for a project. You're getting all the supervision and the overhead and profit for under 10%. So general contracting and construction management at worst should be no more expensive. At best, we should save you some money.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, thank you for your time. So at this time, I am going to take a five-minute recess and then we will go back into the park naming and continue with the meeting. So, um, we'll reconvene. It's 8:26, how about, uh, 8:35, a little longer?
Break after the next.
Yeah, we'll just, after this, we'll hopefully just go right through, okay? All right, meeting adjourned for eight minutes. All right, let's call the meeting to order, uh, back to order, we're still in the committee, the whole meeting. Um, we will move to the next item, which is the, uh, park naming contest. Um, Jim Moran has, uh, taken the lead on that along with Director Quilty. As you probably know, I went to the board and, uh, Parks Board, and Jim has the results.
So, uh, what we'll do tonight is we'll discuss the results that were voted on by the public. And from tonight, you guys could obviously discuss and decide what name you would like to move forward to, for the next board meeting to finalize. And we can finalize that at the next board meeting, um, if you choose to do so.
Jim, but a clarification, the process is, we're gonna discuss tonight's, a recommendation to the Parks Board to discuss now?
The, the recommendation then goes to the next village board.
Okay, all right, for vote.
Ainsley Park is.
Okay, all right, sorry, sorry for, sorry for spreading misinformation, so.
No problem. Um, so I emailed you guys the other day, and as you saw, the public has, has spoken. Um, the top vote recipient for the park name of the five chosen were, was Sequoia Creek Park. Um, the other, uh, that we had five that were, uh, in the final running that were chosen by the Parks Board. Uh, it's important to note, two-thirds of the, the votes were for some sort of variation of Sequoia Park, Sequoia Creek Park, Sequoia Creek Commons, that sort of thing. So overwhelmingly, from this public outreach and our initial public outreach, where people submitted names, I saw it was, or I was kind of expecting something like this, just based on what we saw. So this is in line with the kind of, the, the feedback that we've received. So tonight, you guys can discuss and decide what you would like to do. If you have any questions or anything I could do.
So Jim, can you, um, read off the five names and the voting percentages? Just so there's some reference on what names receive what percentage vote?
Sure, so Sequoia Creek Park came in first place with 39% of the vote. Um, in second place with 22% of the vote was Antioch Central Park. 17% uh, in third place was Sequoia Creek Commons. Uh, in fourth place was Veterans Park with 12% of the vote. And Sequoia Park came in fifth with 10% of the vote.
All right, so, um, it's our turn to discuss this or, uh, give some recommendations and then before we move it to the next, uh, board meeting for a vote.
So one recommendation, um, if, if we're gonna go with us, you know, the one that's like, if we were to go with veterans, like, uh, Veterans Park. I think that it needs to be, I think it's too vague. It, I think we need to add Antioch, that would be my only suggestion. The other names I wouldn't, I don't think would need to be changed at all, because it is there.
I think the process has turned out. I mean, I, I always would like more input, but I think over 300 people, how many voted on the last?
It was, we had 337 total, uh, three of which voted in person and the rest online.
Well, what, how many voted in the, or, or entered the initial?
The initial one, it was like 380 something, almost 400.
How many voted in the last election?
I, I, I mean, I am, uh, I'm glad, because I mean, personally, I, I liked Sequoia Creek Park. I'm glad to see that it was the top vote getter, not by a little bit and by a lot. And I would recommend that we go along with what the voting public said and name that park Sequoia Creek Park. That's all I've got.
I also really like Sequoia Creek Park too, because I think the creek is the focal point of the park, it's been buried for so long and now it's up and visible and so I would be on board with that. I, I do kind of like the Sequoia Creek Commons, just because I like the idea of immunity and sort of that feel of like this is a common space. But I'm really open to either of those options. I, I'm excited that the public participated and very excited, thank you for your time on it, Jim, and that's all I have to say.
I, I'm not very creative, but I wanted to call it Central Park in the beginning, but I don't think that's gonna be the, the name of it. I'm out.
You're never in.
Trustee Pierce.
I, 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 I agree with, uh, trustee Blueheart and trustee McNeil, um, you know, the public overwhelmingly said what they, they would like it to be. I, I actually kind of preferred Sequoia Creek Commons also, but the public likes park and I, I'd be willing to vote yes on Sequoia Creek Park.
Not Village Green, right?
Not Village Green.
That's an unknown person. Um, so anybody know what Sequoia means? What that actually word means?
Winding.
Winding River.
Winding River, so when you put, it's, it's kind of an oxymoron, when you get the word creek in the, in the name. That's the only problem. So you got Winding River Creek. So that's the only problem with the name, Winding River Creek. If you, if you read out the definition. Winding River Creek. That's the only problem. I like Commons better. Because if that's gonna be, you're gonna have that, uh, that root building sand over uh, with no anthill hood system. It's gonna, you, you gotta bring some attention to someone to come down there and be able to eat or whatever. People aren't gonna think park, Commons makes it, hey, let's go down to the Commons and have a bite to eat. Commons, to me, makes more sense. I don't think, I get the voting part, I don't think people understood that building part, the usage of the building. It's a problem is that building. Here it's saying now, that is gonna end up to be a storage shed. If you don't put some wording, the food in the name of the park. Probably have more to say, that's not all I have to say.
I'm just, I'm just Wikipedia-ing the, uh, the, the meaning, okay?
But if you get winding, winding creek are kind of an oxymoron.
I'm finding some, something about smooth pebbles too, so we'll have to do our research.
Yeah.
Is it my turn?
Yeah, it's your turn, yeah.
Okay. You can have as much to say as you want, it, that's okay. Um, I always heard that it was moving water. Like, moving water, but, um, but, okay, all right, um, I remember when the creek was out. Probably one of the only people in this room that does. Um, I was a very young girl when they buried it. And I remember the feeling that I felt when I knew that I was looking at it for the last time. And people lived here for 40 years and never realized it was under that property. They didn't know. Now it's up, now it's, it's daylighted and it's flowing through Antioch. It always flowed through Antioch, it was just under the ground. Um, it's, it's in the open and it's Sequoia Creek, it's always been Sequoia Creek. And, or some, some people called it Crick, but Sequoia Creek. And I like the name, I like Sequoia Creek Park. And I'm thrilled that it's there.
All right, well, I think maybe in true democratic fashion, we take the highest, uh, vote total and move that for a vote approval at the next, the next board meeting, does that sound good to the board?
Good to me.
All right. All right.
Just so you guys are aware, what we'll do is, um, it, it, once it's adopted by the board, we'll have some publicity around that as well.
All right. Thank you.
In the board meeting.
All right, so I'm gonna move some, two items from the regular business meeting, I'm moving for discussion on the cowl, since we never discussed these. The first is, um, discussion regarding consideration and approval of a resolution providing an inducement to the Village of Antioch, Illinois in connection with the potential public works infrastructure improvements for the Village of Antioch, Lake County, Illinois, Resolution Number 24-36. Some context on this, um, as was mentioned earlier. Uh, staff, legal teams, myself worked ad nauseam to try and secure easements um, for the Grim Road property. And as we were working through this, um, the numbers were becoming more and more, uh, less palatable as we worked through this. As we discussed it further and further, um, and looking at making the village bond money and dollars go as far as possible. Um, I personally cannot justify, you know, four to six million dollars in additional cost for utilities and roadwork just to get to where we wanted to put the public works. So we started looking at properties that we owned already. Um, one of those properties, the property on 83, uh, which is mostly wetlands, it would not be sufficient size to, um, contain our public works facility. We also happen to own 12 acres on North Avenue. Um, which, uh, we went and walked that site to get the concept of how big that site, and the site is very, very big. Big enough that I believe, um, using the east side of that property would have zero impact on any residential neighborhoods. Um, in fact, our public works is in a residential neighborhood right now. So, um, that's already in place. The challenge is, um, we're paying for this bond money with business district sales tax funds. So to be able to do that, we have to bring that property into the business district. I don't know what the inducement part is, Jimmy can just explain that, but that's where we're at. This is so we can explore the possibility of using one of our properties for public works. Doesn't mean that's a final decision, but it allows us to explore that avenue. So, um, I'll open that for discussion or if Jimmy wants to say anymore.
I couldn't have done better, Mayor. All it, it does not commit the village to do anything. It explores the concept of a location for a public works building. And it allows us to use rather than taxpayer and general fund money, business district funds to be able to explore and pay for that search, and there will be necessary costs on that. So it is a use of non-taxpayer funds to do due diligence that this village has to do.
And, um, our, our finance director is, um, on a cruise right now, so she's having fun. But she will be back for that meeting on the 24th and can show you the cost savings that this move will, we're talking millions, four to six million dollars in cost savings, which then can be used for other capital projects at the direction of the board. So with that, I'll open up for any discussion, um, questions, concerns in the board. We're gonna vote on this tonight, hopefully. Um, so this is just for the discussion portion, anything, anything on this? Trustee Blueheart?
Um, I just had a quick question. The, and I've read through this very quickly and I know, uh, Mr. Sully, we, we talked about it. Tonight's vote is just to authorize us to look at amending the boundaries of the business district, or does it amend the boundaries of the business district?
You're the former, yes, just look at the, they'll allow us to use funds to look at amending the boundaries.
So there will be another vote down the road to say what is included or not in the business.
Correct.
Okay, perfect, thank you. No other questions?
Any other questions on this?
No.
How are we gonna handle the fact that we loaned that property to the township who decided to use it?
Uh, we, um.
I'm sorry, how are we gonna, Justin, how are we gonna handle the fact we loaned the property to the township who decided not to use it?
We have, um, uh, the, the village administrator and I have met with the, uh, superintendents. Um, we very specifically put in language in that agreement that, um, if the, there was a timeframe of say 10 years, I don't know exactly. I think it was 10 years to get the project done. Or if the project was, say, abandoned. And so based on the fact that the township has decided to move in a different direction with the Lutheran church, we believe that triggers the, the agreement for it to come back to us. And meeting with, uh, the super, super supervisor, um, he did not seem like he was gonna, um, block or thwart our efforts if we move in that direction.
Yeah, okay. And then my other question is, I thought we had 17 acres over there.
We may, it's big, I walked it, talked it, where's, where's Russ, where's, uh, Denny, how many? Is it 12?
I thought it was 12.
Well, I, I thought was that we had a portion that had been donated as, as park property prior to the purchase of the Bittner property.
There, there is a separate parcel outside of the Bittner parcel that was, uh, given to us with Windmill Creek, the Arbers, construction, the development.
Okay, but the total you're saying is 12?
Correct.
And so before people start going like, uh, this is just conceptual to look at it. We believe there's enough property there to not only do this project, including a very significant buffer, but also use the rest of the property for potential additional park land between Windmill Creek and the, and the facility, so. Questions?
I don't think so, I, I don't know if it might be a stupid question. I've had some people ask this question too, so this, this site would be for the building, but then like the clarifiers, those would remain where they're at.
Correct, yep.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yep, the treatment plan would stay, stay put. Um, all right, so we will be discussing this, uh, in the regular meeting in a couple minutes. Um, next one is, cause, um, we hadn't discussed this. This is consideration approval of a resolution approving a proposal from Army Construction Services for Plumbing Inspection Services, Resolution Number 24-37. Uh, briefly, uh, HR Green had been doing, Michael doing our plumbing inspections for us. And they believe it's more advantageous to have a local, uh, inspector.
Yes, thank you, your honor. Uh, as you recall, approximately three years ago, we had a full-time plumber who was on staff. Since that day, he's since his retirement, Mr. Thompson's retirement, we have been using HR Green, which provides comprehensive construction, uh, services along with their engineering services. Um, we have had, you know, obviously HR Green's a great firm, um, but we've had some complicating, uh, scheduling challenges with, um, their, um, plumbers because they have so many clients. Um, we thought maybe perhaps it made more sense to have a local plumbing. Um, we thought maybe perhaps it made more sense to have a local plumbing, uh, contractor, so, um, we, we have talked to several different plumbers, but um, what you have before you this evening is a proposal, uh, for a local plumbing company, um, to come before you for approval of, uh, RMA Construction Services, um, their proposed fee would be around ninety dollars per hour, which is less than what HR Green is charging at this point. So again, it's a local company, I think there's a lot more flexibility, uh, it would be advantageous for, uh, our building department. With that, I'll be more than happy to, um, answer any questions. Um, the actual representative, uh, is actually here this evening, um, to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions on this, your concern, before we vote on it at the regular meeting? Alright, thank you very much. Um, alright, well, it's time to move into the regular business meeting, I believe. Um, I'm just gonna reiterate something for, um, before the consent agenda for another mayor report, but, um, I asked, uh, finance to, um, just do me a favor so I can, um, have this in my own mind and the board, but, um, when you were asked about the tax bills that people received, um, one of the things I asked is where do the tax dollars go, and they go in our general fund budget? And, um, our budget is one million dollars less budgeted expenses from twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-five with a two-hundred thousand dollar surplus, so, uh, people are saying that we're raising their taxes, that is not what we're trying to do, so, you can, um, I, I, we all feel their pain because we all live in the village, and we all live in Lake County and this wonderful state of Illinois, so, um, that, that's, that's above our pay grade in that regard. Um, so, we go on to the consent agenda, which, uh, lost it here. Where's the consent?
Are you not doing the, the
We'll do that, we're gonna, yeah, we'll do it right there. Okay, so I have a consent agenda, I have one, two, three, four, five, six items on the consent agenda. Are there any requests to remove any of those items? Alright, um, then I entertain a motion in a second to
Don't move.
Motion, Trustee Blueheart, second trustee Berman, um, roll call, please.
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
McNeil? Yes.
Pierce?
Aye.
Meise?
Yeah.
Peterson?
Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the, um, consideration and approval of payments of accounts payable as prepared by staff in the amount of one million, one hundred eighty-two thousand, eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars and forty-five cents. Do I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Motion, trustee
Second.
Sorry. Trustee McNeil, second trustee Berman, um, any discussion on this? Alright, uh, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Pierce?
Aye.
Meise?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Alright, next item is consideration approval of a resolution authorizing the adoption of the park's master plan as prepared by Hitchcock Design Group, Resolution number twenty-four dash thirty-five. Do I have a motion in a second?
Don't move.
Motion, trustee Peterson.
Second.
Second. Second trustee McNeil. Alright, um, ready for a roll call on that? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Pierce?
Aye.
Meise?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries. Item nine, consideration and approval of a resolution providing an inducement to the Village of Antioch, Illinois in connection with the potential public works and infrastructure improvements for the Village of Antioch, Lake County, Illinois, Resolution number twenty-four dash thirty-six. Do I have a motion in a second?
Don't move.
Second.
Trustee Blueheart, second trustee Berman, uh, roll call, please.
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
McNeil? Yes.
Pierce?
Aye.
Meise?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries, and last item, consideration and approval of a resolution approving a proposal from RMA Construction Services LLC for Plumbing Inspection Services, Resolution number twenty-four dash thirty-seven. Do I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Motion, trustee McNeil.
Second.
Second trustee Berman, roll call, please.
Berman?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Pierce?
Um, pass.
Meise?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Five voting yes, one abstention, motion carries. Next is the village administrator's report.
Thank you once again, so just update you a little bit on some of the progress that we're seeing at the, officially, park now I can call it, I believe. Um, playground equipment is being scheduled for installation, so they're making progress on that part of the project. Our near a pavilion is currently scheduled for installation in early June, as you recall. The contractor, um, from Nearie, their team will, will travel to our area and physically install the pavilion. Lot of landscaping work being done, I think we're starting to get a really good picture of what that park is gonna look like and what the space is gonna bring to the community. Uh, one thing that's gonna probably be a little bit delayed in the landscaping area is the twenty-four foot Christmas tree that's being installed, um, just because of some of the weather delays that we've experienced. Uh, we real, have literally a matter of days to get that tree installed before, um, the growers recommending that we hold off until the early fall season, so that will likely go in, in mid to late August. Um, fuller plans to have the, uh, the root ball hole dug, and then backfilled with a loose, loose, uh, non-compactable material, so it'll be a quick, easy install for us at that point, hopefully. Um, steps are being taken by staff in coordination with our contractor to make sure that we're able to protect um, a lot of the new planting and landscaping over the Fourth of July events, um, we're exploring a couple of different options, uh, depending on where we're at with the park itself, of either keeping some of the fencing completely intact, um, you know, obviously backing it up a little bit onto the sidewalk for allowing spectators to watch the parade, or we're exploring an option to potentially have snow fencing in place that's gonna just restrict access to those sensitive areas of the park that we don't want people trampling on the, uh, the new landscaping. Our contractor is saying that they're still on track for substantial completion, hopefully by the end of June. Obviously, if we continue to have deluges like we did yesterday, that's gonna create some complications and that's subject to change as the, as the work progresses. Uh, Jim Moran and staff are working on a ribbon cutting and park dedication for the park, oh, right now we're looking towards the middle to end of August. We formally, uh, cut the ribbon on the park even though it will probably be accessible to the public a little bit in advance of that. And then, um, Mark is currently putting the, uh, the finishing touches on the RFP for us to go out and seek proposals for an operator of the cafe, and to trustee's point, maybe it'll be a nice fruit stand. Uh, speaking of the grants earlier, um, the mayor was in Springfield, uh, for Lobby Day a couple of weeks ago. We made a lot of connections and was able to learn, um, some strategies that potentially can make us more successful in seeking grants, um, we've cer- recently engaged Dan Sh- Shamin, uh, who is a lobbyist at the state level, who's been retained to assist us on, on a short-term basis to assist us in our efforts to obtain some of the grants that we're currently, um, uh, applying for. Um, we've had numerous conversations with him, it sounds that he's making good progress with connecting us with some of the uh, local legislatures that, um, we've already had indications of support for some of these grants, which obviously is key for us to move these forward, to make sure that we've got support on both sides of the political aisle down in Springfield to get approval for these. Um, over the last couple of weeks since our last board meeting, um, we have tirelessly searching for uh, funding sources for our projects that aren't gonna impact our local tax base, and I'm proud to say that in recent weeks, we've applied for just a little bit over two million dollars in both state and federal infrastructure grant funding requests. Uh, one of the primary focuses for, um, the state, I'm sorry, the federal grant funding through Representative Snyder's, as the mayor, mayor emphasized, is about six hundred thousand dollars to improve our downtown, uh, ADA accessibility, make improvement to our, in access to our downtown area for, for those mobility problems. Um, these grants would obviously complement the efforts already underway for planned downtown improvements, including, uh, staff's efforts right now to address some of the worst areas of our downtown sidewalks, and it's began making improvements with those in this current fiscal year. Last week, I had an opportunity to attend, uh, a Quiet Zone District meeting that was facilitated by the Village of Buffalo Grove, who is our Quiet Zone Administrator. Um, they're expecting that we're gonna have to, I, uh, start that process that we just seemed to finish uh, in late twenty-twenty-five, early twenty-six through the feds, so, um, they're ramping up their efforts, um, you know, they're, they're holding to their three-year recertification scale, which my understanding is that in the past, they were, they weren't so stringent with that. Um, there was some concern raised by, um, the consultants that, uh, the, the, uh, QZ group is using, that the FRA seems to really be targeting its attention towards large quiet zones, um, and unfortunately, the quiet zone that we are a part of that runs from Antioch down to the Buffalo Grove area is currently the second largest quiet zone in the US. Um, the FRA favors small quiet zones, where they only have to deal with one jurisdiction to deal with to bring certification and issue quiet zone, um, uh, certificates too. Um, and it seems that they, they really are intent on breaking up some of these, these larger QZs into smaller QZs, which unfortunately would leave each independent community responsible for the mass, massive undertakings that are needed to recertify its own quiet zone. The engineering cost, consultant cost, um, all those things that kinda roll into the project. The other implication is, is that if the QZ is decertified, um, as, as a large QZ, uh, it's estimated the process for each independent municipality to recertify as a quiet zone would take approximately eighteen months, and right now, the indications from the FRA is that we would not be surprised if they, uh, ordered the reinstatement of horns to sound throughout the quiet zones during that recertification process. Um, so, we really need to be ready to, to face these challenges and work with our partners as we move together. Um, you know, that's probably gonna come at a little bit of a cost to each member agency, um, we're gonna have to really step up our games in terms of hiring more consultants and expanding the engineering scope that we're doing on the quiet zone, again, running all the way from Antioch to, uh, Buffalo Grove, so it's, it's not a cost we're gonna absorb by ourselves. Um, but it's certainly gonna be more cost-effective to share these resources than our own. Of course, I'll keep the board updated as, as this moves forward. That concludes my report, and listeners, any questions?
Questions? Trustee Pierce?
Back to the FRA thing, uh, I just wanna be on the record, why aren't they spending their time focusing on the five thousand trains that come through our town? And the ones that break down here all the time, and have given us the nickname, the Antioch Strangler, instead of busting our chops on, on busting up a large quiet zone?
Sure, um, I think, I think one of, one of
You could write to our representatives to help them force that view?
So, so the quiet zone, um, is working with consultants, and each indepen- individual community is also working with their, their legislatures at the federal level to try to, um, get them to advocate for easing this process of quiet zone. Um, Congressman Schneider's office was, was heavily involved during the last recertification process, um, but unfortunately became apparent during it that, uh, for one reason or another, he didn't have a lot of influence at the FRA level. Um, so, we are currently, um, exploring connections with, uh, with, with, uh, Dick Durbin's office, uh, he used to sit on the chair that oversaw the FRA. Um, and we're told that he still has a lot of inroads with that federal agency and maybe able to lend better, um, assistance to that process. So we are certainly, uh, leveraging our, our political relationships where we can to try to make the process better. Uh, one of the other complicating factors with the quiet zone certifications itself is that the railroads are typically against them. They don't support them because it adds risk and liability to them, so it comes down to the fact that the users of the railroads don't support them and, and would love to see them go away, so, um, as you can expect, the railroad operators have a lot of clout in, in Congress and at the federal level, so we're fighting an uphill battle in these.
And, um, in that regard, I believe there is a, uh, and I'm not sure, I'll put out the information, Scott, if anybody wants to go, I believe May thirtieth, there is, um, an event with Brad Schneider and mayors and local groups to discuss local issues, so maybe it's a good thing for all of us to talk to him about this.
Yeah, and it's, it's just, just comes down, they're not making it any easier. Now, some of the things that they accepted this time around for communities to do, like the delineator posts that you see, you know, on Grass Lake Road, they accepted for certification this time, and um, now FRA is coming out with rules that the delineator post probably will not qualify for, um, the standards of, of the new quiet zone certification, so committees will have to put in, you know, raised, raised barrier curves.
Alright, any other questions? Right, oh, trustee.
Can I ask you a question, it's not quite on point, but a couple of residents had emailed me, and I meant to email you and, um, Director Heimberg earlier, but I was responsible for the metro station.
Thank you, I got the same.
Some complaints about like graffiti and some trash and something being pulled off the wall on the inside, and I'm sorry that I didn't email you ahead of the meeting, but it just popped into my head that I forgot. Is that us, is that Metro?
Yes, the village maintains the building itself.
Okay, should I email?
What about like the, the payphone and all the, um, boxes for the, um, newspapers that aren't there, are those ours, or are those? The, um, the, I had the same emails, right, there's complaints about graffiti and then the payphone there, and like the different, uh, boxes with graffiti, who, whose boxes are, the, like, the newspapers, or?
I think that's the individual.
Okay, okay.
Material, but we, we basically maintain the building, the only portion that matters is the, uh, the upper walk area.
Okay.
Send you the pictures of what she's talking about, she said something's like pulled off the wall on the inside, and I'm not sure if it's supposed to be like that, or there's a reason. Yeah, okay.
If you can forward it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. Alright, thank you, Jeff, um, we have village clerk. Alright, um, now we have community development reports.
Thank you, very briefly, I wanted to let the, um, board know that we, uh, are continuing to wait for our anticipated response from the Illinois Department of Transportation for the marketplace. Uh, they did submit revised plans, we anticipate, we're hoping to see, uh, comments hopefully within the next few weeks, um, based on our discussion from HR Green, uh, with IDOT, and at that point, we'll know what IDOT is looking for as it relates to the phased improvements of, um, Route, um, one seventy-three, that within itself will allow us to continue, hopefully start to really serious discussions with the development agreement as part of our TIF with the developer. Also wanted, as it relates to the marketplace, I wanna let you know that, oh, we, we, staff will be attending the I, uh, ICSC show in Las Vegas, uh, in the next week and a half. Uh, we're scheduling, uh, meetings with developers, we have scheduled one meeting as of today uh, with Core Acquisitions, which will be, um, one of the major developer for, for, uh, pads out there for commercial users, so we're gonna have an opportunity to meet with them in Las Vegas, and we'll have a better understanding of what they're proposing for the marketplace property. Um, with regards to an additional discussion, um, as of today, um, I had discussions with the owner of the Antioch Plaza. Uh, as you know, that problem has been a challenge in parcel property for many years, and the mayor's had major concerns about the Antioch Plaza, the actual existing condition. Um, talking to the owner of the property, they've agreed to, uh, work with a local architect come in for potentially a reimaging of that center. Uh, and again, we potentially have a meeting with them out in Vegas to discuss, um, some of our expressed concerns about the condition of that property. I wanna let you know that Starbucks, the proposed Starbucks Route fifty-nine was continued again uh, to the June Planning Commission based on, um, that actually currently right now, Star, the corporate office is reviewing the actual proposed elevations, which were prepared by Hubbard Development. Um, we do really no issues in that development, but the corporate office has, um, just been a little slower in reviewing those proposed elevation. Um, and then with regards to, um, the planning commission did review a new cannabis dispensary, they did recommend approvals, we anticipate that, that, uh, proposed cannabis dispensary will be coming, uh, before the board sometime early this summer. Uh, and then with regards, finally, um, staff is working with a, uh, uh, an architect, um, who is, has a major, uh, relationship with a production builder, a large, one of the largest production builders in Chi- Chicago, and they have advised staff that, um, they're very keenly interested in be locating a new development in Antioch. We have given them several prospective sites, um, so, um, as I get further information on that potential development, um, I will, uh, advise the board, thank you.
Uh, just a second, Mr. Garry. When was the last time, since, since you're talking about new, new development, new houses? When was the last time we looked at our impact fees for schools and for parks and stuff like that?
We haven't looked at, um, im- impact fees, um, probably, well, at least for over five years. In fact, we, I was doing a survey of local impact fees, um, coming attractions. The school has approved some additional, uh, impact fees, I will bring, I will be bringing those impact fees to the board uh, in the near future, um, and at that point, I wanted to have a survey of some additional impact fees of other communities for the board to evaluate.
Okay, yeah, because I think with the cost of living these days, that the impacts have to go up.
Uh, one other thing for, uh, Michael is, um, uh, what, all, a bunch of staff went and walked the downtown, but then, uh, Michael and Ross and Mark took it upon themselves to go measure the actual, uh, sections of the sidewalk that need to be replaced, uh, potentially the lights, they budgeted a hundred thousand dollars for, um, improvements on Main Street for this year, and they believe they can fix all of those, um, uh, concerned sites where the sidewalks are all screwed up, um, this year, so, well, I have a map in my office, so you can see that if you wanna see.
So we will, we'll be working on a bid package, which will go out this construction season for those, uh, for those repairs.
Alright, um, All right, um, thank you, uh, finance. I just have to interview, this is Keith, for those of you that don't know Keith, he's not here all the time.
Good evening, everybody.
Right-hand man.
Uh, Zeta asked me just to provide you with a very, uh, short update from the finance department. Uh, first we wanted to thank, uh, Jeff for his outstanding leadership and, uh, allowing for a very easy and successful budget process. Um, the, uh, comprehensive budget books will be available in the next, uh, few weeks. Uh, and with that, we are ending the, uh, budget season and now heading into the audit season. Uh, the auditors will be on site, uh, for our preliminary audit the last week of May. This is when they check personnel files for completeness, uh, payroll and, uh, various transactions that happen throughout the year. And then they will return in August, uh, for their fieldwork.
All right.
That's all I have.
Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Police. Mr. Smith?
Good evening. Mayor and the board. Like to give you guys an update on the flock cameras. Uh, we're in the final implementation stage of those. Um, and just to highlight what had happened, two weeks ago, um, our detectives were given the ability to view those flock cameras as we implement the system into the department wide. And a retail theft occurred, uh, at a local business and the witness only saw three digits of a license plate and the make of a car. And he was able to get onto his computer and find that car, uh, through the flock cameras and we identified the registered owner. So, uh, it's already proven success with that. So I'm pretty excited. Our three new recruits are doing real good. This is their second week of field training. Um, I'm thoroughly enjoying them and I, I don't expect any problems with them or we don't expect any problems. We'd also like to congratulate Officer Charlie Schultz for being the District Thirty-four S R O. Kind of went through a vigorous, uh, joint selection committee interview. He's going to do a great job there. And also like, we'd like to recognize Courtney Nemec. She's one of our detectives. She had a lengthy two-year investigation of, um, some severe crimosexual assault and aggravated sexual abuse, uh, last month, um, after her testimony, uh, the offender was sentenced to ten years D O C. So I'd like to congratulate her. And then we'd also like to remind you guys of Cop on Rooftop for Special Olympics is next Friday, the seventeenth, from five AM to noon. Hope to see you guys there.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, um. Any requests for executive session? Did I have any before tonight? So I will ask for trustee reports, any trustee reports?
I've got a couple of questions.
Trustee Pierce? Anybody else?
Um, since we're opening up this brand new beautiful spanking park, um, I'm, I'm concerned about those people who want to go in there and since we have dispensaries and.
Since they have dispensaries and vaping stores in town and cigarette stores in town, are we going to have posted signage and enforcement of the no vaping, no smoking on, uh, in public parks? Is that one of our plans? Put up appropriate signage and enforce?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that it's a specific, uh, thing on the punch list, but certainly one of those things, I think, that'll come up and we will make sure that the appropriate signage is posted.
Okay. Cause I, I know I was walking behind people that, the other day and I was at some village events, I'm like, really?
Go to New York City.
Twenty twenty-four.
Yeah.
Of course, another thing on the books.
Okay. And then along that subject, uh, you, you sent us a report about the, the changes in the stores where they, I don't know, maybe no longer sell, selling kratom or Delta eight, but they're selling derivative, derivative, derivative. They're selling things like that with different names.
Yes, um, so we do have one, um, business within the community that seemingly has just ignored, um, our ordinance and continues to sell, um, many different forms of kratom and Delta eight. And I believe from the, from looking at, I think they actually expanded some of their offerings from, uh, from when the, the initial inspections, um, apparently you could put some of those things in. They make a smoothie powder for it apparently that you could sell. Um, so. Smoothie powder that you can mix kratom into, yes. And that was. So you can drink, make a shake.
A protein.
Yeah, you want to make it, okay. Put it, put it in your chocolate shake or what, you know, whatever. For a word. Smoothie or whatever. Um, so yeah, so, um, spoke with the mayor in his capacity as liquor commissioner and the clerk and attorney are currently working on notice of hearing to, um, bring that operator in for a, um, conditioned hearing on their liquor and tobacco license. And then, um, action will be taken as appropriate by the mayor in his, uh, capacity as a liquor commissioner. Um, number of the other businesses, um, you know, we did have a number that complied and stopped selling the products outright. So I want to point that out, we do have a lot of good businesses that followed the intent of the rule and the spirit of the law. Unfortunately, there were others, um, you know, there was discussions when this, uh, legislation was passed that the trend is, uh, a law comes out, they change one chemical component within that product. It is no longer Delta eight, it's now Delta nine. Um, but not quite Delta nine THC they should buy to dispensary, uh, one small molecule off. And our legislation doesn't currently prohibit that. Um, so I think that's, again, probably a discussion to have at the board level to see how aggressively you want to see staff, um, pursue new legislation to address those things. Um, be a conversation with, with the attorney and their team, whether or not we can expand that to prevent not just simply Delta eight, but any derivative of THC be sold, um, outside of a licensed dispensary, I think would be the best approach. But again, um, you know, with every new legislation comes some exposure to, to risk of somebody challenging it. Fortunately, I think, um, not only have we not been challenged in our Delta eight ordinance, but we've been recognized as one of the, uh, uh, communities that are first to implement as a non-home rule. So I think, I think our track record with the solid legislation being produced by our, our legal team is, is proving fruitful. Um, but again, it would go back to Mr. Vasselli and his team to, to come up with something equally as effective for, um, these other derivatives, if it was the will of the board.
Well, I would personally be interested in entertaining his, his brilliance for a moment.
So, uh, thank you, I'm humbled. Um, the one thing I'd like to add is, and I'm sure the chief, uh, administrator would also agree with me. Anytime you deal with the regulation of substances, as was stated, you, it's a cat and mouse game and it's, if you think about it, it's very similar to performance enhancing drugs in professional sports. You're always one step behind and there's always one scientist who's working on that. Um, say what you will about the Illinois General Assembly, they are looking at this issue with some genuine sincerity. Um, and they seem to have, um, taken an initiative with regards to this. Now, what comes of that, I do not know. But I would like to see what happens there. And of course, if we need to expand the scope to ensure that the safety of our children and our other residents are protected, we will do so. Um, so thank you, thank you for the compliments and the kind words.
Yeah, and I, if, if memory recalls, Jimmy, um, I think the way the ordinance was designed, there was an exhibit page that would allow for future substances to be simply added to the prohibitive substances.
And that procedural step was done to be able to amend it simply by changing the exhibit and putting the next exhibit on, knowing that it will be a proverbial cat and mouse game between scientists and regulators, scientists and.
You? Trustee Peterson?
I have just one thing. Um, we were uptown for ribbon cutting ceremonies and reminded me, um, the, the lights, the string lights that are in the parks, in the alleyways, um, are like interrogation lights. They're. They're so bright. No one wants to sit on those benches underneath. You know, the, 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 the lights along Lake Street used to be more amber colored and now they're interrogation lights too. Um, I'm just wondering if we could go back to that. We're spending so much money downtown to have people come down and spend evenings at the park and walk through our little park areas and, and the alleyways and sit there and maybe have a glass of wine or, or a, a coffee. And it's like, it's, it's not a great lighting situation. I don't know what happened. I don't know what happened to Lake Street. It, all of a sudden we've got these bright lights. Well, there, there are LED lights that are more amber colored. I have them on my house. I mean, they don't have to be interrogation lights. I, I.
We can look into it.
Could we?
Street light, it's limited to what colors and lumens that are given out. It's not like if you go to Menards and look at a whole eye.
Right. And I understand. And if we could work to that, and that would be great. We're, you know, uh, especially the string lights that are around town. Maybe we could just change out the bulbs and, um, uh, make it more user friendly and more inviting. You drive by somewhere and you're like, you think, oh, that looks wonderful. I'd like to go, I'd like to go have a, a glass of wine there. Um, but no one feels like that at that little park. Uh, it's, it's beautiful, by the way, taken care of by the Antioch Garden Club. But at night it's just awful.
The, the, the string lights themselves were something that were kind of proactively identified by Michael and Mark. Um, is probably be some, something we need to look at. I know they're actively working with Jimmy Hill.
Okay.
Explore what our options may be to.
All right.
Get those down a little.
Thank you. I appreciate just you looking at it. Thank you.
All right, um, anybody want to make a motion adjourn? Don't move. Motion trustee Pierce.
Second.
Second trustee Berman. Uh, roll, roll call in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, none? Uh, meeting is adjourned at nine twenty-five.